Okay. Good to see you. Are you Judy?
Okay.
Because I saw that Judy was sleeping outside the town.
So, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Looking to see how much it's done since.
If you were falling, then I would catch you. You need my light.
Okay, thank you.
I'd find a match, because I love the way you say good morning. And you take me the way I am. If you are chilly, here, take my sweater.
Good to see you.
Your head is aching. I'll make it better, because I love the way you call me baby. And you take me the way I am. I'd buy you road games. When you start losing all your hair, sew on patches to all you tear. Because I love you more than I could ever promise. And you take me the way I am. You.
Nice job. You all have to be impressed with this.
It is.
This is something that they put me over there.
Yeah.
This is not. Yeah, this is my own thing. I talked to Alex. Yeah, we had a great conversation. He feels much better. Yeah, we're doing.
If no one's right, it's open all.
Oh, bitch. It's more than a march. It's similar.
Yes. So, are we good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, sounds good.
Ready to go?
Yeah, I will say.
There's about 10 seconds.
10 seconds. Everybody all ready to go? I'm open.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work Study Session in the Harrigan Mitchell Government Center. The time is now 4:20 PM. We apologize for being a little bit late. We were finishing up an executive session upstairs. All right, so we are going to take speakers and comment cards at the beginning of each agenda item for tonight's meeting. Just a couple of things here. We're actually going to be taking the, pretty much everything in order here. We're going to do the fire station location study update first, because we have a consultant on the line who's actually from London. And so clearly, on a much different time zone, and we always try to make sure that we're respectful to those who are presenting in front of the council. And then after that, we will take the renaming process, which I know is why a lot of folks are here this evening, but just want to let everyone know that we will take that. And everyone who wants to speak will definitely be allowed to. So with that said, we're going to move forward here to item number two, issue review session items. And actually, I'm gonna say, Madam Clerk, so I'll just do the, the public comment at each item, whatever. Do you want me to take all the public comment right now? Whichever, what do you want?
You can go per item. That might be easier, Mayor.
Say it one more time, sorry?
Per item.
Per item, okay. Let's just do that. That would be a lot simpler. All right. Let's go with item number two then, issue review session items. Madam Clerk, any speaker comment cards received from the public regarding Agenda Item 2A Station Location Study Update 2021?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, sounds good. I'm going to go ahead and call upon our Fire Chief Greg Reese and our Assistant Fire Chief Daryl Duty. We also have Graham Holland and James Bachelor from ORH Consultants. They're the consultants I just spoke of from England. They're going to be virtual this evening. So with that, Chief, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good afternoon, and you have done the introduction for me again, Greg Reese, Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Chief. With me is Assistant Chief Daryl Duty. And then presenting on behalf of ORH will be James Bachelor. And I believe he's up and he'll be taken over here shortly. Or, am I able to see? There we go, okay, I was looking for the slide. So we're here this afternoon to give you an overview of the Station Location Study Update, Station Plan 2040. I'll give you a little history before we get into it. The contents of the presentation today are agenda is here before you. I won't read them to you, but you can see what James will be going over in this presentation this afternoon. We can go to the next slide. Okay, we've made the introductions. Again, we came before you in 2015 to do a station location study or present a station location study. And when I say "we," that was ORH was given that project. And we worked closely with them. It was an in-depth study, and it was one that we had asked permission to do before we made decisions or recommendations to all of you on future stations. That, a lot of things, I think we'd all agree, have happened since then. And we felt five, six years later, it was in our best interest, though this was a plan that was supposed to run out to 2025, to come back before you, because so many things have changed. Development has changed, roadways, density, et cetera. And we wanted to do a deeper dive. So we're looking at it to 2040 in this update here. I, I would tell you this, it would be in our best interest to continue to update it. We know things are changing here at a rapid pace. So when I say 2040, you're, what you're going to see tonight is laid out to 2040, and it's a moving target, just as 2020 or 2015 to 2021 has changed so much. I, I don't have an ask for you all here tonight. I, I really want to provide you with an update to the 2015 plan. And it's really a strategic plan for us moving forward. And when we come forward and ask for the things that we think are necessary to respond to the density, the growth, et cetera, you have an idea of what is driving these decisions. And we would, again, support and remind you of that. But there's no ask tonight. Next slide. And I just want to touch on one, one piece here, and then I'm going to turn it over to James. The reporting areas that we're going to talk about tonight, there's an assumption to be made in this presentation. All of our stations are depicted here as they are in the city right now. Up in the northeastern quadrant of the city there, there is a white dot, which is Station 8. We've been before you in that. That was identified in the 2015, as well as other reports that we've done, utilized ORH to do. That is in the Novus Innovation District. For the, there's, we will assume that that station is going to be built. The next thing is in the pink, northwestern portion, the western portion, which is yellow, and the southwestern portion. That is how they'll be referred to in this study. Those are areas that were identified in 2015 as areas that we would want in the future. And so when you see that versus the stations being recognized, it is the area that was identified in the first study and continues to be areas as we see the density. We see things change with population, that is, density, structures, et cetera. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and go to the next slide, and I'm going to turn it over to James.
Thank you, Chief. Hope everyone can hear me all right, and good afternoon all. So before we jump really to look at what is anticipated to happen going forward, just spend a few minutes really looking at what has happened since the last review in 2015. So firstly, in terms of demand then, what we're showing here in the dark blue is what happened between 2010 and 2014. In the light blue, the demand we were projecting over that 10-year horizon through to 2025 at the time of the last review. And overlaid in red here is actually the five years. And so what has happened in the last five years? So really, two purposes for putting this graph up in front of you today. Firstly, to demonstrate the rate of growth that the city is experiencing in terms of demand on the fire department. But secondly, really, to show you just how closely those red dots do align to that that was projected at the time. So putting a lot of confidence in the findings and the outcomes of the previous review, but also in the projection methodologies that we will continue to use through to 2040. So whilst demand is increasing, it's not the case that all of this demand is being responded to by the department. So the reason for this is that the department is, of course, part of the regional automatic aid system whereby the dispatch is done centrally by Phoenix Regional Dispatch Center. The dispatch is for around 25 departments in the greater area. And what this means is that when you call 911, you get a response from the closest vehicle, even if it's not from the city you're in. So what we're looking at here is the Tempe and its five neighbors. What is the flow of responses from, from engines, from ladders into the city in green and out of the city in red? And what you'll notice, with the exception of Scottsdale and perhaps Phoenix, is that the flows into the city, those in green, are much more numerous than those that are flowing out of the city. And effectively, what this means is that Tempe is very much benefiting from the automatic aid arrangement that it has with the wider area. Particularly, you'll note when it comes to Guadalupe, who provided over 1,400 responses into Tempe in 2019, whereas only 100 flowed from Tempe into Guadalupe. So a big net benefit to the, to the city as a whole from being part of this automatic aid system. Though it's worth noting that while, of course, the neighbors are responding into the city, they're not necessarily doing so within the NFPA 1710 response standards. And in fact, although they are responding, they are the closest, the responses from your neighbors are on average a minute longer than the responding times when the city are the first on scene. And it's for that reason that when we come to looking at optimizing stations, in a few slides time, we optimize the new stations and existing stations within Tempe, taking no account of actually how close to your borders neighboring departments may have their own stations to effectively try and make the city self-sufficient in case any changes to this automatic aid or anything should occur. And lastly then, on the historic side of things, we've looked at demand and responses. So what we're looking at here is your response times and specifically your crew response times. So what we're not looking here, what we're not taking account of is the 60 seconds or so that it takes the Phoenix Regional Dispatch Center to actually take and dispatch to that call. The reason being that that 60 seconds is completely out of the control of the Tempe department. So that is not something we're looking at here. Appreciate, there's a lot of numbers on here, but the general trend, as you will see, is that response times have been increasing over the past five years. If we look at fires in the red bars, they've increased from 90th percentile response time of seven minutes, 10 seconds in 2017 to eight minutes, 15 seconds in 2019. You'll notice that there are a few even longer bars, those in yellow. The reason for that is that there are some code to non-licenced sirens responses in here. So that is what's leading to those much longer yellow bars. But as I said, the, the general theme here is that if we've seen demand is increasing, and so too are response times. But of course, that's what's happened historically. What do we think is likely to happen over this 20-year horizon through to 2040? So our demand projection methodology takes two elements really. First, it takes the population forecast that are provided by MAG. It combines those with anticipated increase in demand rates, and I'll explain those in a bit more in a moment, to get the overall demand projections for the city. It then breaks those down so that we can take account of local developments within 130 or so traffic analysis zones. So first thing to population then. So MAG are projecting the city's population to increase by about 30% over the next 20 years, taking you from around about 190,000 where you are now, up to nearly 250,000. But as you'll see from the map on the right, that growth is very much concentrated up there in the northeast of the city. So close to your Fire Station 1 and the proposed Fire Station 8. So then to demand rates. So what we mean by demand rates is for a given population, how often are they calling the fire department for assistance? So in this case, we're reflecting this as how many incidents there are per year, per thousand people within the city. And what you'll see in the table at the bottom here is that the number of incidents per thousand people has been increasing year on year, from 122 in 2014 through to 130 or so in 2018 and 2019. And this phenomenon isn't unique to Tempe, far from it. We see it in EMS providers in the US, in Canada, in the UK, right around the globe really. There is just this increased propensity to call for assistance. And there's no sign of that slowing down anywhere. So projecting that forward, we anticipate a demand rate reaching nearly 170 incidents per thousand people by the time we get to 2040. And what that means is with 30% increase in population, combined with a similar increase in demand rates, means that overall demand on the service is projected to increase by a little over 60%. That takes us from where we are now at about 25,000 incidents a year on the department to over 40,000 incidents a year by 2040. So huge growth forecast over this period. The only other thing to note on this is that you might see that BLS incidents, so that basic life support incident, is projected by 2040 to actually overtake ALS incidents as the dominant demand category, the dominant ask on the department. Lastly, as I said, when we were introducing the demand projection process, we're not just taking a citywide view here, of course. What we're doing is then breaking that down and looking at the local developments. And not dissimilar to the map that we showed on population growth, you of course see that a lot of the anticipated growth in demand on the department is going to be up there in the northeast of the city. In fact, when you look in that bottom left table, the demand growth in the proposed first due area of the new Station 8, we're expecting demand to increase fourfold there. So from about 700 incidents in 2020 to over 3,000 incidents per year in 2040. So really big growth up in the northeast. But that's not to say there isn't growth elsewhere. There is still growth in the south. There is still growth in central Tempe. You can see those lighter shades of purple. And whilst the predominant growth is up there in the northeast, the city is going to see increased demand on the, on the department in about every single area. So we've seen the response times are deteriorating. We know that demand is only going to increase. So what we've looked at through use of our simulation models is really looking at options to optimize Stations 3 and 4. Other stations within Tempe are assumed to be fixed, because there are no planned changes to the infrastructure there. And in addition to optimizing Stations 3 and 4, we've looked at potential 9th and 10th stations within the city, all with the view of minimizing response times across Tempe. What has that culminated in? Well, that's culminated in a phased strategy over that 20 years. And now, before I should bring up that phasing option, it's worth saying that the dates that you will see are only indicative at this point, and that timelines are, are far from set. But the modeling is certainly suggesting that the first thing that the city should be looking to do, department should be looking to do, is to relocate Station 3 just slightly west along Baseline Road. That should be followed by a Stage B. It includes relocating Station 4 west torso along West Elliott, but also introducing a ninth station out to the east of Tempe, just to the east of the 101 on East Southern Avenue. And then lastly, by 2040, we're looking at a Stage C that would introduce a 10th station up in the northwest of the city on West University Drive to help with the, the demanding increases that are seen up in that portion of the city. So then what does that mean for response times then? So in blue here, we're showing what has happened to response times for ALS incidents citywide over the last five years. And as we've already shown, those have been generally increasing. Before we look at actually what that phased option would achieve, I just wanted to show you a status quo scenario. So what this red line here is showing is if no changes were made to the apparatus in Tempe or the stations in Tempe beyond those that have already planned. So this does include the planned opening of, of Station 8 in 2028. What would things look like? And as you see, response times deteriorate over the next five years, improve temporarily at least after the opening of Station 8. But then as demand continues to grow, more pressure is placed on those units that do, that do have the upper limits on response capabilities. And as a result, through to 2040, we'll be expecting response time to deteriorate to over seven minutes. That is at the 90th percentile. So if we introduce that phase strategy, we can certainly bring about a good number of improvements. What you'll see in this green line here is that by phasing in those changes, so by relocating Stations 3 and 4, and by adding a ninth and 10th stations into the east and northwest of the city, we can reduce response times by close to a minute, according from the, do nothing from the status quo scenario, and get our response times back down to similar levels to those that were seen in 2015. Now, you will notice on the, the bottom of this graph, at the five-minute mark, I have placed a marker there for what the city's safe and secure community's goal is. So that goal is for six minutes or less 90th percentile ALS response. That translates to five minutes crew response time when we're taking out that 60-second alarm processing element that PRDC managed. And you will note that we are still a fair way off that mark, but it's worth noting that, yeah, of course, to get, to get down anywhere close to five minutes, we first have to return to where we were five years ago and then make inroads from there. And the department is certainly aware of that and are working operationally on, on ways to get that down further. So lastly then, everything that we have been looking at that I've showed you to date is assuming that those automatic aid arrangements continue as they are, as they were shown on that slide with your five neighbors earlier. But we know there is some uncertainty around whether or not Guadalupe will be able to continue operating in the automatic aid arrangement. So what we've been asked to do, and what we'll show you on the next slide, is what the impact on response times would likely be if Guadalupe could no longer participate in the automatic aid arrangement, if those 1,400 or so responses that they are currently providing in the system were no longer provided. So looking back at what we've previously shown, red line, the status quo, green line, the phasing option, I'll add a second red line here to show you actually, if we couldn't rely on Guadalupe responding into the city any longer, well, things would get on the order of 20 seconds worse from a response perspective. So whereas we were previously breaching seven minutes at 2040, we're now much closer to seven and a half minutes response time by 2040. But reassuringly, I place that second line to green line on the graph. This is how things would look if we couldn't rely on Guadalupe. But actually, if we did have those stations, those movements, those relocations, as well as those two new stations, you'll notice that the gap between those two green lines is much smaller than the gap between those two red lines. And that's because by relocating Stations 3 and 4 further west, the department is much more resilient in those areas to, to be able to mitigate any reductions in performance from, from Guadalupe, no longer being able to respond into the city. So just to summarize very quickly then, so as we've shown, demand is anticipated to increase at a huge rate, 60% over the next 20 years. And even with the addition of Station 8, response times are going to deteriorate purely because units are getting busier, they're higher utilized, and therefore they're less available to respond. So the modeling has suggested through a phased station strategy, by relocating Stations 3 and 4 to the west, we can provide greater resilience. And by placing additional sites both in the east and northwest Tempe, we can improve coverage and get our response times back down to where we were in 2015. And that's everything from me. Are there any questions on that at all?
Wonderful. Thank you so much for the presentation. Very much appreciated. I'll look to the council to see if there are any comments or questions. Member Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I have some comments and, and a few questions. First of all, I really appreciate this presentation. I'm a huge supporter of our first responders in the city, so thank you for, for putting this together. It's excellent and informative presentation. It really gives us an accurate picture of what's to come. And so I want to get a hold of, or I want, I want to get ahead of this, this, this situation and, and follow this, this summary. And it sounds like you guys picked some of the best of the best to work with us. So that's, that's very impressive. And, you know, really, this plan is about saving lives. That's the ultimate, you know, and, and Chief, we talked earlier about the response time. Like what are our ideal response times to, to get as far, to get to those calls and save lives?
Just what we've set as our goal, as our performance. And, and we, we don't make those up. Those are, those are established through national standards, as well as our accreditation. We are accredited, Fire Department, as you know.
Yes.
Those are our goals. And, and that is, when we make recommendations in the future, it, it will be to make every, you know, take every opportunity we can to get as close as we can to those goals. Since the last report out, I think we'd all admit, growth and density and a lot of things have happened, and it's, it's just a moving target. But the, the goals are well-established, not only in our performance measures, but by the, the agencies that accredit us and by the governing bodies that drive us.
And what would you say are the next steps moving forward? Like kind of our immediate steps? I mean, other than, I mean, I know the plan kind of spells things out, but I mean, you're the chief. I mean, what, what would you say is next steps?
I would, I would stick to what we've done here through modeling. And that is why we've asked, long ago, when I took this position, I'd asked for you all to give us support and, and bringing in a third party. There are a lot of agencies that don't want a third party to come in, and, and we're willing to do that. And I think we stuck to that original plan in 2015, bringing recommendations. And out of that, we made the adjustments that we did with Station 7, and we safely put an LA unit there. I think in the future, you'll, we'll have to readjust with the LA unit. Station 8, again, when it was brought to our attention about the Novus Innovation, we went to work on that. And quite simply, I would say, as long as we continue to utilize agencies like ORH to come in as a third party, make recommendations for station locations, and we make the decisions on how we best place assets in to serve our community, that's the roadmap.
And when we put in Station 7, we had a lot of neighborhood input, correct?
Yes.
When we put that in? Yes, and so you would anticipate that we do the same forward, I would imagine?
Absolutely. We are currently working on Station 2. We have all of our team here in Tempe working. Learned a lot from Station 7. As, as you know, it was a long time coming, quite a bit of time between Station 7 and the previous station. So we'll take what lessons learned in Station 2, and we'll seek public input, as well as workforce. And the other departments in the city are playing a significant role, because they have to care and maintain for that, that building as well. So yes.
Very good, Chief. And I, I just want to say that I have 100% confidence in you and, and the Fire Department. So thank you for doing such a great job.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys, for the presentation. Obviously, this is something that I totally 100% Phoenix Fire, Tempe Fire, we're all, all within the mutual aid. And just showing the differences between different cities and coming and going, you can see the drastic need for Tempe to have these units within our city. It also provides a quicker, more response time for our city. So thank you again for the report, thorough, thorough report. What I've been advocating and, or I've been trying to advocate for years now, is we need to get money back within the core of our city. What we have to provide for our citizens, you know, the, the basics, the public safety, the, the public works, to make sure that not only the, the people on the front line, but behind the scenes, that we're staffed appropriately. Because our citizens, you know, they, they have, they have needs, they have things that we need to provide, but we also need to support staffs along with that. So I know that we're being presented, you know, with what we see for service, but there is the behind-the-scenes stuff too, that's instrumentally important. And I think that going forward, when we're doing our budgets, we need to be really cognitive of the fact that money has to be dedicated to these things. We do have to keep in mind, when we present, or when we ask for things, to make sure that we're providing the core services to our citizens out there. That's, that's instrumental, in my opinion. Two questions. With Guadalupe, be going or not going, are we having, do we have a plan for a station within that area? I'll go with that one first.
We currently do not have a plan for a station, Councilmember. We, we are communicating with them, and, and I certainly don't want to. I, I, mine is not that, that they're not going to be able to provide a service. As, as you're well aware, there's an, there's an IGA, and it's the Automatic Aid Agreement, and you have to meet some specific criteria and provide specific services to be able to part of it. So mine has been one in which I've, myself and the city manager have, we communicate with them, and, and they have brought to us their concerns. brought to us their concerns. And so I just thought I would model this out with the what if, they were not able to participate in the automatic aid system, how would that impact us? Because again, we do rely on them heavily.
Right.
It's, we believe they'll run 1,600 calls in our city. Since we made a decision to move an engine to station seven and backfill it with an LA unit, as you know that model, it did place a little more burden on them. And so we do rely heavily on them. To answer your question, we, we could do some things to immediately address if they announced that they would not be able to participate. We haven't heard anything like that, you know, recently. We do have some plans, but not for a fire station today. But we have some plans, and I've worked closely with city management should that happen.
And just, just as something that, if something were to happen, that, that we can be a little bit nimble, because that is a huge hole of, of area that really needs service. And I think we know that, so for sure.
They call a lot of calls.
And I know, right. And I know that with the lake and lake activity, and I think you guys are already working on with, with, you know, the idea of what does it look like with a boat rescue team to have that in place. And I know that's something that we're probably looking down the road. But it's one of those things, once again, that we got to, got to start thinking about these things now as we start growing and expanding. And you can see our growth here within the downtown area and the activity around the lake. So once again, it's just being cognitive of just making sure that we're budgeting appropriately as we go forward within the future. So I appreciate the data. This is awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Any other council members? Any comments or questions? Councilmember Cubey?
Thanks so much for the presentation. Whoa, a little strong there. And thank you for being so open to our internal consultants. When Braden Kay was relatively new to the position of system, he had a lot of input. You were, you were really encouraging of that and how that station should be built. I know we're talking about where we are locating our stations tonight, but it's also important, I think, to talk about how we build out those stations, and that we make them as clean as possible for our firefighters who suffer from the impacts of all the chemicals and materials encountered in the day-to-day job. And so we have the opportunity to build a, you know, net zero station, and one of the cleanest stations, and a model for fire stations in the state, if not the country. So I'm excited, not just about the location aspect, but how we really can lead on how we build as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Cubey. Next up, Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Great. Thanks, Chiefs. I certainly do appreciate it. And, you know, all the work that's gone into it. I think it served us really well, I think, to continue this model. And especially, I would have loved to have seen how station seven implemented some of those calls that we're talking about in regard to the automatic aid, because we know it did. And not only did it probably change those calls going in and out, but also the response time. And that was the, the, the goal and what we were trying to attain. So it would be nice to, to share some of that really positive data and some of the great things that you guys have been able to do. But Chief, I just want to thank you for proactive and really looking after this community, I think, at the highest level. We're really fortunate that you've put together a really fantastic executive team and quality staff, and they're always putting our Tempe residents first. So thank you so much for that. And I know, I've sat in with you before with meetings in the town of Guadalupe, just trying to make sure that we have our hands on that and really understand what that looks like in the future, and understand how sensitive it is to their community. And you're being very respectful. So I certainly do appreciate that. I 100% too, just like Councilmember Navarro said, and we've heard from our other council colleagues, I'm 100% behind this. I am so glad we're finally working on station eight, I mean, station two, because about station two for, for people that hadn't been in station two, like, it definitely needed a little work and some updates. And, you know, we talk about the health and mental health of our employees. That was one station that definitely needed. So that's instrumental, I think, moving forward. And I think for the quality, and for people that are at station two. So thank you for that. The, the one thing that you kind of touched on a little bit, but not so much, and I think Councilmember Navarro mentioned it, you didn't really emphasize too much of what it is when, now that we have such a dense community and we have a lot of height. And what, how is that taking, how are you taking that into effect in regards to when you go to a call, does it take a little longer to reach the resident to be able to get there? I mean, are those things taken into consideration when we talk about this? Because you look at the numbers and you say, oh, my gosh, our trend is to go higher when it comes to our response time. But there's so many things, not only just our population growth, but the way that we've grown, that has really got to kind of, I don't want to say create, been a little bit more challenging for us to be able to reach those individuals.
Sure. I'll take that one, Councilmember. As you could see on the map there, we're putting, the closest, stations are ending up a lot closer than they were in the past. And that's due to the height that you're talking about and the density. We're seeing a lot more high-rise buildings come in. So we've always looked at response times in more of a two-dimensional fashion, right? We're going north or south of things. So we're moving along the streets, and then we're typically responding to a single-story, two, three, four-story high building. And that really doesn't take much time once you park the apparatus to get to the patient. But now, when we're looking at buildings that are in the 20 stories or even 30 stories, we have, you know, one that's in the 30s, it takes a couple more minutes once you park the apparatus to get your equipment, get the elevator, and then get up to the patient. So absolutely, we take that into consideration. Why, when you look at that map, the stations are ending up closer and closer together. So it's that density that's, we're trying to respond to that.
Yeah. And I think, as much as I appreciate automatic aid, I, I think it's just really important that we work very hard now and in the future to make sure that we're serving our residents the best that we can with our own employees. So that would be, to me, my ultimate goal. I don't know what that, that looks like for you guys, but I understand and am very grateful for our sister cities, I mean, for the automatic aid, because they need us and we need them. And, and I think you guys have been really great partners. So I certainly do appreciate that. So 100%, I'm all on board. And I do think it's just really important that we ensure that you have the right resources and that this is included in the budget moving forward as a top priority. And you guys have always scored significantly well on our citizen satisfaction surveys. So even though maybe we be tying your hands a little bit with resources, you guys have always come through. So I just want to say thank you so much to you, to the department, for everything that you guys continue to do, because I know this community is grateful, and so am I. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage, as well as, this is just a very small bite of the whole study. And we will make that study available on our website. And it does address station seven. And I will send you some station seven impact, so you can see how, how significant it has been down there. And, and we all know, because I update you, we've had some major calls in which we've got there quickly, and, and just terrible calls that occurred down in that area that it's made a difference having it there. So I'll, I'll make sure not only it's up online for our community to see the study, but we'll point out station seven's impact for the, for not only you, but the community down there.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Any other council members comments or questions? Councilmember Garland?
I just want to say, station seven did make a difference in my life. We had to call 911 for my mom, and it took, it was so quick when they got to the house, although, you know, a minute seems like an hour when you're with somebody stressed. But it was absolutely amazing how quick they were able to get there to our location. So I appreciate station seven. So we might be in that, be sending out. I just amazed when I saw the automatic aid flow going, that's the, what we're doing, sending our people out of the city, and the other ones bring in their, the other cities bring in their fire trucks in. Those numbers were incredible to me. And I really absolutely appreciate the, the work that we're doing, and that we look after each other. They're really caring for each other. But I, I would like to see ways that we can make our budget work to be able to have us look, take care of our, our city, to have these fire stations in the areas that we want them in, so that we are caring for our city, that we are fire stations. We've got a, the population, our fire service and EMS service doesn't seem to be growing as fast and quickly as our population is. And as Councilmember Arredondo Savage just mentioned, the height, I'm always thinking about, and it's not just the height of the building from your door to the door of the building, but you have to go up. But then the other thing I think about is the population of cars and people on the road, that we're dense down here. And it does, I have seen trucks have a hard time getting through. So I really appreciate all this information that you've given us. And I'm, I'm 100% behind you in trying to make sure that this works, because the safety of our residents is the number one thing we should be taking care of. So I really appreciate this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Anyone else? Any further comments or questions?
Chief Reese, Assistant Chief Duddy, I mean, everything's already been said by my colleagues here. I completely concur with everything they've said. You all do an exceptional job, and we really appreciate you to provide, not only, of course, fire services, but medical rescue. That is, I know, probably 70% of a lot of what Tempe Fire Medical Rescue does is frankly save people from very challenging situations. So just wanted to very publicly thank you for everything you, everything you will continue to do. And I do agree that this is something that should be prioritized in our budget moving forward, to make sure as we become a bigger city, a more dense city, from a population standpoint, and therefore adding more complexities, that we make sure that we're continuing to provide the appropriate fire and medical rescue services, so our residents can rest easy at night. And we obviously know we've got the right people here for the job. So just wanted to say thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, as well as the other people that will be presenting tonight. Thank you for letting us take this slot, because of our consultant in the UK. And I want to thank James from the UK. You can go to bed now.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. All right. We have item 2E, and I wanted, I wanted to note something really quickly. This is a person work-study session in the council chambers at about 18 months. It's the mayor. I know it's Councilmember Garland's first work as well. And it's the first time this council has been together at a work-study in person. But I wanted to let everybody know, just, you know, we're allowing in-person attendance, but we're also continuing to offer virtual participation options. So council meetings are accessible to all of our residents and, frankly, preferred ways of participating. That was one of the interesting things that came out of the pandemic, was there are some people who feel very comfortable coming out in in-person settings. And some people, because of the pandemic or just work situations, would prefer to participate online. So we're still allowing for online and virtual options. And obviously, once again, since we're starting this sort of new hybrid in-person virtual format, we just ask you to be patient. Technical issues, the way. So just wanted to point that out. Next up, we're going to take item number 2E here, which is the renaming process. I'm going to, staff members, but I'm going to go to the public comment first. I'm going to bring up Keeley Varvel-Hartzell and Brenda Abney to come sit here at the front table. They'll be doing the presentation. But I've got a number of comment cards here that I want to let people get through. Just wanted to make everybody know, we're welcoming public comment. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. You'll hear an audible sound at the point that your time is up. And we have quite a few cards this evening, so please bear with me as we get through all of them. The first one we have here is Ted Harrelson.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Ted Harrelson. I am the grandson of Harvey Harrelson. And please correct me if I missed facts, as I understand them. A cache of papers dated 25 were found in Tempe. And so I shared with some documents from 1923 that Colonel McClintock assembled in his grand jury investigation of the KKK in Arizona. Names of admitted Klan members appear in multiple on these different files, both in the McClintock files and the cache of Tempe papers. Am I correct so far? So nobody's disputing that. So it's therefore, anyone associated with these names in the Tempe files must be Klan members. But when it comes to the case of Harvey Harrelson, I, I think this is completely circumstantial and highly doubtful. This news of, of any KKK membership is complete surprise to the surviving family. Nothing in Harvey's past that we're aware of, anything like this. And other people that will speak today will talk about Harvey's character. Governor Howard Pyle wrote glowingly of Harvey, his death in 1986. And Harvey had so much goodwill in Tempe that in 1987, Tempe city leadership thought it appropriate to honor him by naming Harrelson Park. All of the papers at the Historical Society Library have only one piece of paper with Harvey's name on it. And that is a piece of paper that says he paid $10 in dues to a CM Oshauer, now reputed to be the Klan treasurer. But nothing on this piece of paper says anything about the Klan. On the rest of this ledger or receipt is a category labeled donations to the Baptist Church. Ten men paying anywhere from 50 cents to $5. Interestingly, only three of the dues payers, ten men, which Harvey's name was listed as number 10, were also on the church donation list. So three people were on the dues-paying list that were also on the church contribution list, donation. So I think it's kind of interesting, even whose name is here to be canceled, was on the donation list, but not on the dues-paying list. So what does this all mean? Could it be for something else entirely? Many of these men were in the Rotary Club and the Masons. Could this be for that? One piece labeled paper, 100 years old, seems like flimsy circumstantial evidence to credit a founding pioneer of Tempe, as well as other lifelong Arizona pioneers named Harrelson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrelson. Really appreciate it. Next up, Melissa Howe. And after Melissa Howe, they'll be followed by Danny Howe. So Melissa, you are up next.
Please state your name and residence for the record. All right. Hello. My name is Melissa Howe. I was born Melissa Harrelson. And for that reason, I am very proud. I have a lot of the possible renaming of Harrelson Park. I found this after my aunt put a post on Facebook containing the article from a local newspaper. As it played over and over and over again on the 5, 6, and 10 o'clock news, I became more and more angered that my grandfather was being a racist KKK member. But with the alleged activity in the 1920s, and 100 years later, this is just coming to the surface. Anyone that knows the Harrelson family can tell you, family members are racist in any way, shape, or form. If Harvey Harrelson had been a racist KKK member, I think he would have shared those views with grandchildren. But that is simply not the case. I don't remember Harvey that well, because I would only visit his child, but I have read about as many donations to the community. I do, however, remember a lot about my grandparents and Juanita Harrelson and my uncle and dad. I can be firsthand that the Harrelson family is a Tempe in many, many ways, and not, and were not racist against anyone. And that's true 100 years from now. My grandparents were active members in the community, not only with their jobs, but with the clubs that they volunteered with as well. These clubs were involved in having donated $1 million in scholarships and needs to the city. Does the city plan on contacting all the people, businesses that were on the receiving end of the Harrelson's work, to know that they should possibly return their scholarship monies, or tear down trees, plants, and buildings, et cetera, because this family has ties to the KKK? My uncles are different. They gave back to the country, being on the police force and owning small businesses. Yesterday, I saw this so-called documentation that is being used as the reason to accuse Harvey of being a KKK member, and the reason to name, rename the park. This document is extremely weak at best. Nowhere on this document does it refer to the KKK or the Butte Klan Number Three. If the KKK was acting from 1921 to 1925, why is Harvey's name only found typed document from one day in 1925? His signature appears nowhere. If one of my students was doing court on the KKK and its members, and this is the only resource they could find, they would be told to either find more resources to back up their evidence, or to find a new topic. The name change of Harrelson Park affects more than just the name of the park. Generations of Harrelsons doing their part for the city. I hope that the council members will take to review all the documentation about all the families involved, and not the reaction to the publicity given to this issue of the so-called racism, before proceeding to the resident group to renew the schools. This has not been taken by the Harrelson family lightly. It is a huge part of our heritage. I agree that that's completely wrong. But I also know the Harrelson family has never been racist or hateful towards others, and they're
All right. Next up, we have, we can't do any clapping or stomping of feet or things of that nature. Just want to let everyone know in the room. But Mr. Howe, you are up next. Please come on down.
Sorry, I had to clap for my wife.
State your name and place of residence, and you have three minutes.
Yeah. Danny Howe, Camp Verde, Arizona. Mayor, thank you. Councilmembers, thank you. I, I know what politics is all about. I served in the education system for 30 years, just retired. I taught seventh grade for 19 years, was a principal for 10, and for three. So I know what politics is all about. I'm, I'm here to support, I've known that family for 30 years. I've known that family for 30 years, been a part of their family. It's crazy what you guys are thinking about. We drove down from Camp Verde to... And talking about what you're thinking about doing renaming and this and that, and your streets are horrible coming through town. I mean, it rattled my truck. There's homeless people out and about. Like you said, Member Navarro, put your money where your mouth is. You were talking about budget, about the fire department. Huge money that you're wanting to change all... Do you know what it's going to cost to take down the Harrelson plaque, the statue in front of the park? Do you know a dollar amount? Don't know that dollar amount.
Well, that's good information.
Yeah. It's probably going to be pretty expensive. But all of this nonsense that you guys are doing, put that towards your fire department or put it into the schools so that the taxes have to go up. You really are truly about serving your people of Tempe, which I think you are. I mean, you're like good, upstanding people that are sitting here. I would hope that you would take a look and listen to what people are saying. Going through Tempe as a little kid, the only thing I recognized today when I came down here over right across the bridge from Town Lake, and that was like a landmark when I was a kid many years ago. It just doesn't make a lot of sense what you're doing. I don't know that... Done too much research about it. I would hope that you'd go out and do a little digging instead of making a knee-jerk reaction based on polit... This mask is political. This is not about safety anymore. This is about... We are not in the... That some of the Harrelson's fought for. This is not the freedom I remember. Ted served in the Air Force. I don't think this... That's not the country he fought for. It... I don't know. I don't know. It's kind of like... Before you poop, it doesn't make any sense.
Thank you, Mr. Howe. Appreciate it. Please, no clapping. No clapping. Next up, we have Pedro Gomez. And I just want to say that after... By Judy Bowers. Please state your name and place of residence. You've got...
Hello, everybody. I am Pedro Gomez, and I am a resident of Tempe. I just want to tell you all about my school experience that I've had being a resident of Tempe my whole life. So I started going to school here in Tempe in kindergarten. I was a bit shy. I was timid because English is my second language. I learned Spanish from home, but I was still looking forward and very much interested in learning. There was an... This older kid, twice my size, basically saw that I was like... Saw that I was not speaking English very well, pushed me in the... Said, "Hey, you don't belong here. Speak English." When I was five, I didn't understand what that meant. I don't understand what that implicated. When you're five, you should know what that means. But there are many people in this community that have that, unfortunately. And this was not the first... This is not the first time I've felt that way. In middle school, I was mocked for speaking ghetto, whatever that means. And one time when I went to Walmart with my mother, when my mother was speaking Spanish, she got a white lady and told her, "Hey, speak English. This is America." And many more, many more. Micro... Bull... All aspects of this community. This looming fear of feeling is something that many people of color, many non... Like myself, have to... When I first heard about this news, I was unfortunately shocked. I was actually... Like experiencing so many accounts of people giving these comments, giving these references, I'm just like, what else is there? What else is there? What else is... What else... What other skeletons does this city have regarding race discrimination? I have found anti-Semitic globalist propaganda at my Tempe-based high school in a textbook. I... Why is it that people are freaking out about this? I don't understand this. The only time people are freaking... The people that don't have any sense of connection to this community.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Judy Bowers. And after Judy, we will have Marina Thomas. Ms. Bowers, please state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Judy Bowers, Tempe. I'm a James and Susan Redden who read in 1974 for their contribution to the early settlement of Tempe. My great-grandfather Redden was one of the sons of James and Susan. In 1888, James and Susan were a covered wagon with eight children from California to homestead and farm in Tempe. They had the ninth child after arriving here. They established a 310-acre farm and beekeeper, director of the Salt River Valley Honey Producers Association. With his development of the honeybee industry, it enabled it to continue through World War I and World War II with the sugar rationing because they were substituting honey. Education for the nine children was important. Upon their arrival to Tempe, it was small and flimsy and eventually blew over in a storm. In 1890, James donated money, building materials, and the labor of his sons so a larger, more strong built park is where the schoolhouse used to stand. I don't know much about my late grandfather's brothers, Byron, and I know my brother Lowell accused of being part of the KKK. And I'm not here to defend the decisions that they made in the 1920s. The little I know about Byron is he came to Signal Arizona in the early 1880s and around 1890. Farmer. He served 25 years with the Tempe Canal Company, was very active in the community, and a member of the Tempe High School Board. An active Shriner, a member of all Odd Fellas, and the civic... Other civic organizations, all organizations being known for helping people. In 1974, the board creating and naming the Redden Park had access to the living descendants, my grandfather, and the sons of the original James and Susan, as well as the facts and information they were able to provide. This should be rec... The decision that the board made in 1974 should not be taken lightly. The Reddens have quite a legacy in Tempe that started in 1888 when the original pioneers, James and Susan, arrived in Tempe. Redden Park was named in their honor of the early pioneers and the contributions of the early settlement of Tempe. To change the name of the park, thereby canceling their legacy because of a decision two sons made more than 30 years later, does not... I only learned renaming a couple of years ago and learned yesterday, no descendants of the Reddens were found or notified of any of this name-changing. I've had little time to do research, and yesterday I learned at the Historical Society, and haven't been able to review those documents yet. In the little research I was able to do, I did come across something of interest that I'd heard about from my grandparents, but this was the first writing. And tell them that Tempe was a sundowntown, which meant African Americans were permitted to work in Tempe but encouraged to live elsewhere. In 1965, the first African-Americans bought property in Tempe. Because Tempe... Should we cancel Tempe and perhaps consider changing the name? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Marina Thomas.
I want to say that when I saw the news article, considering that renaming some of these locations, what was disheartening to me was to see that the indigenous people were not going to be included in the renaming process. There's a history to this land prior to 1912. All that you guys see on the roads, alongside of the roads that are cemented, were dug up by my ancestors. There's a genocide that this land was built upon. My people were starved. They were neglected of water for their... Which led them to be subs... People on this land. There's no money. Have to think about money for our people. This needs to be acknowledged. Climate change is a real issue. If you're really worried about saving lives, we need to be worried about the condition of this land. And our people need to be acknowledged. I drive this entire town on a daily basis, thinking about what it... Was ran by indigenous people by our values. Instead, it was stolen. Stolen. And I don't know my own language because of these things. I suffer on the reservation with my people and see these thriving cities around us. We need to be acknowledged. First, this was our... My blood is in this soil and has been for thousands... My... Dug up for... We don't need continued development for more buildings, for more fire trucks. We don't need all of that. We need to... To the state of what's going on with this land and how we change it and how we make things better. I heard that the city of Tempe wants to be a sustainable city. Well, maybe you should start talking to the indigenous people who know about this land and figure out how to make it sustainable. And please, for those whose family are descendants of these members who... Please find healing in yourself and recognize that there's more to the... Just your family. That there's a whole world that's... I want to know what it means, and I don't because of this settler development, because of economic development. My history is being erased over and over and over again, and it hurts me. Please know that these things have hurt me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next up, let me go to Lopez. Mr. Lopez? Here? Okay. Okay, no worries. Next up, we have David Duaron. Please come up and state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Je suis Duaron. Bonsoir. Et... I don't speak much Spanish, but I did learn English. However, the English killed 75% of my ancestors, and I should be offended by everybody that speaks English, but I find that that's just hatred. Hatred doesn't help. Cities have done cancel culture, haven't seen anything positive from it. The expense that you're going to go through pulling up the monuments and reprinting stationery, that money could be sent to the schools directly. The schools would know better what to do with it rather than... What happened ago, but it's happening now, might be looked at 100 years... Need cancel culture. We don't need to create... If a city doesn't know they're a victim, why tell them that they are? That makes them feel bad about themselves, and they don't need that. We don't need to add hate. There's hate in our community. We don't need to add more hate by telling people that there's this wrong that you have to do something about. At the very... Why isn't this subject put up to a vote for the citizens of Tempe? It'll have to be done behind these closed doors, and I'll leave before the bell rings. Merci encore.
Thank you, sir. Really appreciate it. Next up, we have...
I will start off by reading two demands made by student organizations and multiple indigenous organizations. Demand one: Change the names of Tempe city streets, parks to be named after KKK members. Two: Prioritize indigenous renaming. Those are the two demands, and speak my piece for myself, not on... You must change these names. That much is clear. It cannot be made clear enough that this history is not a thing. It affects today and it's way through to today. Supremacist violence is a genocidal force which has caused immeasurable harm in Black and Indigenous communities. People bring up the history of what their ancestors did for the area but fail to acknowledge And have a... Of harm with no... In addition to assembling systems of harm, things without any consequences. As such, the voices of Black and Indigenous should be prioritized in the renaming, and that is clear. That is all.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Row. Please come on, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Sushi Row. So I'm in Peepash territory. Short, because if you really wanted the community's input, you would have reached out, apologized, and worked with them to meet their... Why did it take so long to announce this? COVID is not an excuse to disguise shame. Why McClintock, the only highlighted anti-KKK crusader? You couldn't reach any Blyke Park leader? I bet you're still as Columbus as an explorer.
No, sir. Sir. No outbursts, please. Sir Rowan, you can...
It takes a lot to be here. You don't deserve my time. You don't deserve my energy. Out of all the charges against protesters in the valley, the prior year, Tempe is the only one prosecuted to the point of conviction. That's worse than Phoenix. This performative charade barely scratches the surface of the idolized racism in your I got approached before by a council member who asked me to express gratitude to you Y'all need to really think about undoing, not just these names, but the decisions that were made during their tenure, sitting in those same seats. Research that. Research that.
Thank you, Sir Raugh. Next up, we have Jewel Valenzuela.
Hello, my name is Jewel Valenzuela. Mi nombre me llamo Joya Valenzuela. Nepo yomeyaki. So I'm also a member in a community in Tempe for a long time. I'm a public school teacher. School district. I'll retire in another year. So I have been in this community for a long time. I in the street. I have to acknowledge that we are on Tohono O'O Peepash land. My father was also in the military. He was airborne 82nd. If you go to Guadalupe, you'll see him. He's on one of the murals that I posted just last year because he passed away. I donate a lot of my time as an artist to, for free. And I'm here to support my native relatives in the renaming of places and for the evidence also back here of letting us know that your relative did donate to the treasure of the KKK. Because that gives us some evidence there. The history of these lands started your history. The history of these lands have started a long time ago. And our people have been on these prior that 10,000s of years before that. These lands, our people have traveled back and forth. As our Tohono relatives said, Tohono O'O relatives said, we're already there. You all just sit them in. We know how to take the aura of the land, our our faith, nation, our people from the land were not misplaced. We have been here for 10,000s of years. And our few our children. And we our ceremony, we teach them to sing and dance. And we teach them to protect mother earth. And we would like this to be acknowledged and putting the names of the people of the lands that it belongs to.
Thank you. Next up. Please state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Christopher Gray. I live in Tempe. Of Hudson Manor. My wife is a direct descendant of Carlson, who started the subdivision there. The information that was given out on this pamphlet, which is unfortunately the only information says that there's a name of on it says, sorry, let me open this. Current name, C.A. Hudson actually started it. Time, we're actually going through family history papers, trying to find out if it's the same person. If it is the same person, I have no problem personally with whatever you guys decide. I actually support letting the black community have their changing names. I want us to be correct on it. A Tempe document that's, it's a World War II impact study, I think is what it is. From 2001, December the C.A. Hudson on it with my wife's great grandfather's name. This paper says Astmer. I don't know if they're the same person. I only found out about this earlier today. It just didn't seem like hand in hand. I am efficient because I haven't going forward with this. Let's very, please make sure we're doing the right thing and make sure we have the right so that we don't hurt any more people. People haven't been hurt, but I can say we can't. We can move forward not hurting any more people. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Appreciate it. We're going to take a pause for a couple of seconds here. There's been some feedback we're getting from people who are watching the meeting at home on WebEx saying that the speakers microphones are coming off a little choppy. So we just want to do a quick reboot system, but just stay here for a couple of minutes and we're going to right here. And as soon as Jason tells me that we're ready, we'll go ahead and restart.
I see that we're back on. Is this microphone breaking up? We need to do a hard boot. Check, check, check. One, two, one, two, one, two. Check, one, two. Testing, one, two, three, four, five. How does this sound? Check, check, check. I'm getting reports that it sounds better. Check, one, two, one, two. Sounds like we're much better now. Okay, sounds like we're good. All right.
Not full reboot. Just left the meeting. Okay. Okay, I've been told we did a, not a full reboot, but a mini reboot. And apparently the sound has gotten better on both Tempe 11 and good. Just wanted to make sure that those hearing at home actually hear the conversation. So with that, I'm going to go right back into the comments. The next comment card I have is from Nora. Is Nora in the audience? Okay, let me, I will her, then I'll just put it on the bottom here and come back. We'll be next go to Kiana Sears, who's going to be participating virtually. Let's see, Carla, just in how we pull up Ms. Sears.
You can check with our host, which is Karen. Karen will be pulling her up remotely.
Any Sears? No? Oh, she's coming in. Oh, is that Kiana Sears? Nora? Oh, yes. Okay. So Nora, I'll go ahead and call you up right now then. Perfect. And we'll see if we can still bring but if you'd like to come up, just come name and place of residence and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Nora. Tempe. I'm from Avondale, but on a state a university that's huge with such a diverse population. Wanted to speak because it's incredibly disheartening and uncomfortable to know that a place that I spend so much of my time in and that has such a racist history immediately condemn, change the names of parks, streets, and various other things that are named after people who are even just affiliated with the KKK. So diversity, one of the largest sprawling universities in the world with a diverse student population, already in attendance and growing, is in a city that has names of KKK affiliated members, and we demand that they be changed. And that throughout the process of re as black and indigenous voices in the community are heard and their opinions on the name change are prioritized. Not only as a reflection of Tempe's diversity, but as a statement to denounce the city's racist past and I think that I thank you for the efforts that have already been near enough. Land recognition should be beyond a statement and that to absolve the past and to recognize residents of Tempe and in general, as an example, we should be changing. That is uplifting to the members who have already been defaced through the the racist people who have been named after these things. So changing the names of these items is just a beginning though, and it's not to properly recognize and denounce Tempe's and the KKK members or affiliates who are instrumental to the founding of Tempe. Changing the names is only a starting point. I urge you guys, the city council members and residents of Tempe to create a space in which these name changes are facilitated that respects the population most. There's no reason to uphold or respect the past or the financially influential people of the past if their morals and beliefs do not respect the current occupants. Tempe has made changes in the past to certain things that recognize aspects of the racist past, but I don't think it's enough. If there's any speculation about activity pertaining to community, it's important to change these places. As the people of Tempe and as the affected by the violent history of Tempe that is persistent, it's important to recognize, not to do it. And I think that though these people were influential to Tempe in the past, there's, if there's any confusion that they were affiliated with the KKK, I think that it makes sense to assume that yes, they were if thought about it. As a person of color I've experienced being here, just knowing that the past isn't really recognized. And it's not even that long ago that Tempe had an complicated history. And I think that making it acknowledge that these things are named after KKK affiliates, but I think that recognize them or just say that, okay, we'll change them. And black and indigenous people in Tempe have been affected the most by it. And I think that going forward with the name changing process with their opinions in mind most. And yeah, thank you.
Let me go to so Carla ready, Billy, is Ms. Sears in the waiting room to speak virtually or?
She's not present in the virtual audience.
She's not. Okay, I will go ahead and to the side. Okay, next up, I've got another virtual Michelle Rose. Is she in the
elevated to speak?
Okay.
Racist past is absolutely necessary for our community to heal. Tempe's schools, parks and streets should not be named after members of a domestic terrorism organization. The Ku Klux Klan tortured, dismembered, and burned American children like Emmett Till, women and men alive. Renaming these public landmarks is a matter of public safety. In 2020, the Southern Poverty Law Center tracked 26 hate groups in Arizona. Who a community chooses to memorialize and honor matters. Failing to rename these landmarks sends the wrong message to hateful violent extremists. Every day, these monuments to vitriol occasion remain is another day. Every Tempe resident, myself included, business owners and elected Tempe officials yourselves remains an unabated shame. Replacing the names of KKK members with black freedom fighters such as Medgar Evers, who was murdered in front of his children in his own driveway by rights supremacists would be a small but significant step in Tempe's progress towards racial reckoning. To the families, it is painful to realize the people we love and respect participated or were affiliated within nation's most notoriously violent racist group. But it's absolutely necessary for our humanity. Please read Linda Gordon's The Second Coming of the KKK, The Ku Klux Klan of the 1920s and the American political tradition. I urge the Tempe City Council to vote yes on renaming process. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Next up here, our next speaker is Martinez. Martinez. Please come up in place of residence and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Mario Martinez. I live in Tempe. I am in favor of renaming Tempe parks and streets that were named after Ku Klux Klan's members, if these were Ku Klux Klan members. The immigrant Martinez Bagada family. Our family has been recognized by the Arizona Oracle Society as one of the pioneer Hispanic families of Flagstaff, Arizona. Excuse me. Because I was born before the Civil Rights Act of 1964, my neighborhood in South Flag, Flagstaff, was racially segregated. It was not my imagination. This 1930 uncle, Jesus Bagada, serves as an example of what was happening to Hispanic immigrants during the KKK, when the KKK was active. immigrants during the, when the KKK was active. Uncle was barely injured by a falling tree while working as a lumberjack, as officially noted on his death certificate, with a broken back. Worker compensated, grandstanding and speaking with Jesus in the company hospital, company officials abruptly told him to leave. My grandfather didn't speak English, returned a few minutes later. Jesus was dead. The company didn't have to pay Jesus any compensation after that. The discrimination against Arizona minority families is too numerous to articulate now. Ku Klux Klan and other such groups promoted this. This in regards to civil rights in 1920s, it is imperative that two members of the council avoid the dissonant claim of routine for the recent Tempe civil rights issues. Kubey described Corey Woods's support of the 2014 Tempe Anti-Discrimination Ordinance on behalf of gays, which I support as an inspiration of Martin Luther King's belief. However, in the 2009 city council disclosed, it's a councilman and Tempe teacher, Corey Granville raped a lesbian minor a few months after this was passed, and it was supposed to protect gays. Okay? With these abhorrent actions were disclosed, Corey was, he was in subservient social about it. Granville, Corey for mayor. Corey did not even publicly disavow the movement. It's time to quit the stand and deal with this issue with integrity and much more, much better than you did with the Tempe Anti-Discrimination, Corey. Thank you.
Mr. Martinez? Next up, we have Sherri Louise Thompson.
Hello, I'm Sherri Thompson, and I love Tempe. Harvey was, I did not know him as well as a child because my father was a career force officer, lived many years outside of Arizona. I came to know him very well after I had to go to college. I spent a lot of time around my grandfather from 61 until he died in 1986. During that time, I never said a derogatory or critical remark about anyone. He never said a racial or religious slur in my, he was very outgoing and friendly to everyone he met, and keep making younger friends. Even college boys called him Harvey when he was in his 90s. My memories of are of a man who loved to tell stories about things he had done that made everyone laugh. Harvey came to Tempe Farmers and Merchant's Bank. He left that job as, because that bank was not following procedures. The Farmers' Bank went bankrupt during the Depression. Grandpa joined the Tempe National Bank, later to be known as First National Bank. Here is a quote from former governor of Arizona Howard Pyle about my grandfather. "It isn't easy for a banker, particularly in that 20s, to gain the confidence of people that Harvey did. He was one of the most unselfish individuals known. He maintained a modest profile in the community, which endeared every, all felt they could go to talk to whatever their problems." Grandpa served on the Tempe City Council from 1924 to 28, and on the Tempe High School Board from 1928 to 1948. A family story is that he convinced, donate land for a new school where Tempe School is now. The city refused to accept this land for several years, as they said, Tempe will..." Ralph McMillan, a dentist that Harvey helped start in business, said of Harvey, "He was active in everything and progressive as hell." A member of Rotary, founding in 1920 through '3, helped start Tempe's golf course, helped develop bad... He did a lot for this community, said Ray Ashley, a former Tempe councilman and vice mayor. He was very civic-minded. He was a lot of things. He was always very highly respected. Former Tempe Mayor Rudy Campbell said at Harvey's death at age 95, "He served this community quite well for a long time." If we can all live as long as he did, it won't be... All right, this is the man I knew and loved, and this is the man that the park was named.
Quick thing, Jason, I'm still getting reports the sound's cutting out, so we're probably going to need to do a full reboot of the system, which is going to take us five to 10. Just, I keep getting those people who are at home just saying they, what's happening, and it's cutting out. So out of respect to them, let's take a break until about 6 o'clock. It's about 7 now, and that'll kind of do a full reboot of the system and just stay tight with us. Thank you. Oh, no, you're fine.
Jason, how does that sound? How does that sound, Jason? Testing? I can say more, Mark Whittenburg. I can read aloud from something. Does that sound better, you guys? Is it still good? Would you like me to count? A longer? Testing, one, two, four, five, six, seven, nine, ten?
Okay, is that it?
Um.
No? So no?
So Jason, look.
We've done all of our computers. At this point, it's not like we... I've rebooted our main switching computer. I've rebooted the laptop that runs the WebEx. We've rebooted software on both machines. Beyond that, I don't know.
Chalks, it sounds chalky.
It's... It cut out once while you were doing a test. And there was like some audio popping noise. I don't know. It worked perfectly.
What do you want to tell the mayor?
Perfectly less.
Tempe Eleven sounds great. Okay. Should we let people know where WebEx is? Maybe you stream Tempe Eleven if they were here?
Yeah.
Alright, so let the mayor know.
Alright, looks like we're gonna go ahead and try to start up again. We did a little hard reboot to the system. Just a reminder, as we kind of back into the public comment, you know, no laughing, cheering, stomping, clapping, snapping. Like, we really need to get through all the comments here. And I want to make sure we're respectful of all the speakers. So, that, you know, when people are speaking, that we don't have any commentary or any kind of outburst afterwards. So just, just council rules. I just want to make sure we repeat as we get a few cards here. We've got quite a few more. Next up here, the next comment I have is from Thomas Brown. Yes, sir. Come on up. Please state your name. You've got three minutes.
My [inaudible 00:01:54] I live in [inaudible 00:01:55]. I'm thirty-one years old, born and raised in Arizona. Growing up on the dirt roads in Arizona, green irrigated historic neighborhood. Two thousand and fifteen, my wife and I decided to buy a home. After, after many searches and showings, a beautiful home in Hudson Manor was on the radar. We turned a left turn on the Hudson Manor, headed, fell in [inaudible 00:01:57]. Trees, ones that only get there with time. Dirty blocks, smell of fresh cut grass, and the [inaudible 00:01:59]. Homeownership is the ultimate goal. No more renting, having to tell anybody, or having anyone tell you where to put a nail or paint room. When I see my address, I am proud. I bought that and have some, and to have some change, it kind of feels like an attack. I've never heard of anything named now. Maybe, though, it was after Hudson Manor. I don't know. I just thought it was a cool name. The name Hudson relate is two thousand and nineteen's most popular boy name. We have neighbors with dogs named Hudson, restaurants named Hudson. Turtles, directly related to our neighborhood, Hudson Manor. I've also heard it originally built affordable military homes for vets after the war. Hudson Manor, just words or name, has become a place where neighbors become family. Wallden, [inaudible 00:01:59]. For hundreds of people from out of state. I'm talking seventy years of chain link fence conversation. Laoning, tree growing, bar hopping, friendly, open door community I've come to love over the past seven years of owning and running multiple [inaudible 00:02:01]. From my Hudson, on Hudson Drive. The accusations made, I have seen, and I'm not buying into it. Years later, Hudson is responsible for bringing Arizona's five C citrus and climate. I've talked to people who have actually still, my eighty-two-year-old neighbor Carl, my buddy neighbor, who has lived in Hudson Manor for sixty-two years. Carl, who had many friendly conversations with Hudson, Hudson's, Millers, and Carlson, a popular family during those times. Me asking specifically about Hudson, wondered, those mafia organizations were gone like the Model Ts. I had to look that up. It was nineteen twenty-seven. Sir Hudson helped Carl remove an accidental un-removed. That was no cost to him. He said he was one of the nicest. Mr. Hudson provided seventy, roofs for seventy years, over schools for children over seventy years, built apartments. Ask if you've even, if anybody's built a home. Real estate and construction business, I understand it's no easy. There's never been a problem before, and everything I read is inconclusive. And I don't want to assume or imagine anything. City, you say you're out there to represent the best of the entirety of the community. Well, hear my voice. I live there and it affects me directly. I'd like to keep the name Hudson.
Thank you. Next up, we have Lynn Gilliland. Please state your name and place of residence. Three minutes.
My name is Lynn Gilliland [inaudible 00:02:00]. And I'm the daughter-in-law of Clyde. Clyde was one of the nicest men I've ever known. As a matter of fact, at Nevitt, Harold Nevitt's funeral, a former governor got up and said Harold Nevitt and Clyde Gilliland the nicest man ever known. So that was a former governor. Anyway, Clyde was born in December sixteen, on December sixteen of eighteen ninety-nine. Was twenty-two when this hap, when, when this happened. So, you know, probably everybody did a little something at twenty-two that you're not proud of. And you know what? He was a very strong Baptist. Very religious. So, Baptist and the Ku Klux Klan, all this, all the, and the... I'm sure the Baptist people told him to go to one of these meetings, maybe, and that's why his name is there. I don't think... I know Clyde wouldn't have been a member of the Ku Klux Klan. So, he might have been at one meeting and said, "This is not for me. I'm out of here." And that's why his name is on the roster. Anyway, another thing I'm thinking about is, if you change this, all these children that have graduated from the Clyde, the Clyde Gilliland they won't have a school left. And I've been to many... They had, they used to have them every year. And all these graduates are fucking, say they love, how much they loved the school and everything. And they just wouldn't have a school left. So I don't, I don't, I don't think that would be fair to them. Think, the money to would be well-placed other places. I, I think it's foolish to change history. Of you, to let's research this a little more. I, I am guilty. I haven't, I heard about this last night. So I, I haven't done any research either. But I beg of you to research more. What I've, little bit I've heard about, nothing to this. So, because a hundred years from now, you guys might be on something and it might be changed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Jasmine Brown. Please come up and state your name and place of residence. And you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Brown. I live in Tempe. I actually live in [inaudible 00:02:12]. On Hudson Drive. For about the last and I have fallen in love with the neighborhood and all the people who make up this neighborhood. We still have one of the founding family members that live in our neighborhood. And Carlson's great-granddaughter. Who's very close to Hudson. Heard stories with each other about the things in this neighborhood. Not once has a conversation. We have talked about our oldest neighbor Carl, who bought his house for only nine thousand dollars. His story are always about how he has watched this neighborhood come together to build sidewalks and weekly get-togethers. Actually, one every Wednesday. If our neighborhood wasn't created, we wouldn't share. The name Hudson together, not what the past has to say, but what it is now. We have also done research on Mr. Hudson and have not been able to find any facts place him in direct connection with the issue. We have building homes, schools for people in Tempe. We have a local bar in our street named the Hudson, who went to the Tempe own research regarding how Hudson was created and named before naming it. Again, there was no leading the Hudson and drive Hudson Park to this issue. Not only of Hudson Drive going to be heartbreaking for the memories we have built here, but also a huge financial burden to the people that live directly and have put our own money into fixing up Hudson. I know my [inaudible 00:02:11]. Hudson will be very upset if this changed because that is part of him as well. I feel as if there's not enough information on the past station and change the name as the people who there now are creating a new story together and a new bond together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Albert Dare. Please come up and state your name and place of residence. And you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Councilperson. My name is Albert Dare. I'm known to some others by a nickname. Side dip that works. Expecting some old time. Back in the dark ages, yes, I had a nickname of Buster. But anyway, I want to thank you for the opportunity this evening here. Issues that you're facing. It takes courage. And I want you to know, when I first heard the announcement on the Channel Fifteen the other day, it really began to tear up my heart on many, many issues. But it also opened some doors and windows of understanding that I had longed to know what was going on. And I can give you some examples later on. And I will apologize to any family members for tonight. I will not be using any names. Tonight, I will not be using any names about people, but I will. Okay. No names. Some of the names that are mentioned, heard this, oh, by the way, there's an old story. It goes like this. Those that study history will repeat it. And the history marks that in the 1920s, the Ku Klux Klan was in what they called the second movement. It grew so large in the United States. It's reported there was a shortage of sheets in the nation, in the state of Indiana. But then they. They were going to take the political. They would go out and seize power politically within the community, both locally. Right and. And they have. Either their platform to their program. Didn't care where you were from, just anti because you weren't us. And Protestant. Okay, white Protestants, non-immigrants was their goal. So how did our city end up? I've only been here 80 years, so I don't know back there when, you know, the other. But some of my family members do. Time. But let me tell you. You're courageous to even. And I know hurts some family members, it hurts them. Cause some of these people I. That you're talking about, I knew them personally. They love me and cared for me. When no one else would. I've had to reckon this week since that time announcement. Did because of who Buster was? Or did they love me because I was a white Protestant? Cause I went to the First Baptist Church of Tempe up here. With some that are mentioned here and you. The whole place was white. No one can deny that. Everyone in there was white Protestant.
Mr. Dare, can you give you about another second?
Okay, I want to give illustration as a fact. In the late 50s. There was a man at the First Baptist Church of Tempe. A wonderful, wonderful man. And there was this man and his wife who came to Tempe. To be a research scientist at ASU. He was unable to find a home even to rent. And I want to tell you why, because he was an American heritage. And I went to a girl in our church and her dad was in real estate here. I said to her, Bonnie, can't your dad do something? These are nice people. We learned in Sunday school that God loved the red, the yellow, black and white. And they were precious in his sight. Now what are we doing? Well, she said, no, they can't. My dad would be in trouble. I said, why is it against the law? No, it's the unwritten rule. So this same family came to my pastor. They could come there because there were no other churches. Said, yes, the people for the pastor out of town. Now that's the fact. They ran pastor shelling out of town. Because he allowed that family to attend our church. I don't care how nice those people were. That was wrong. And I would say for you stand up. The Tempe from these days forward. Will sound that loves the red, the. Whatever color it is, the others are green, blue, pink, black, I guess. Red, yellow, black. Are precious our side. Will take a stand against the present and the future of discrimination.
Thank you, Mr. Dare.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for the long wind, but 80 years in a little town, you know?
Thank you. Thank you. Also, once again, remember. Thank you. Once again, remember, you know, no clapping, no snapping, whatever. We've got to, you know, keep things even and fair for everyone to speak. Okay, next up, Brad, I got Brad from ASU. Yes. Please come up and state your name and place of residence and you have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Mr. Hughes, Tioria, Arizona. Good evening, Mayor Woods and Council. Once again, we're looking at council culture right. Big stage in America. A lot of patriots come and visit Tempe. Football games, basketball games. Money spent by African Americans also in Tempe. We also have an African American mayor in Tempe. I'm glad that the alleged Ku Klux Klan member descendants are here so we can get some type of. On what he stood. Council of Tempe back then. Named the school, named the street, named the park after the white mob. They had courage, plenty of it. They wasn't fearing no Protestant fearing any religious people. What they were fearing was not getting reelected for putting that mob's name on the school, that white mob's name on the street. Mob's name on the. We know the daughters of the Confederacy splashing around a lot of money during the 1918 90s when they were founded. So why don't we have the daughters of the Confederacy along with those descendants of those white? Pay for removing the plaque, pay for removing the name of the street, pay for removing the name parks. And I'm glad you're addressing the critical race issue, the critical race theory. Yes, there was atrocities by the white mob to all Americans, all patriots. We had all Americans and all patriots after 1865. When we had the deconstruction era, we deconstructed. Mentalities. But we found this one lady named Ida B. Wells, who wrote a book at record. And she has a connection to. She investigated those lynchings here in Arizona. So as we look at truth speaking to power. Tempe City Council, you are that truth and you're speaking to the power that is no longer accepted in America. A white mob. We will not be drug out of our houses because we speak up for the lesson for. Because we speak up for the indigenous. Bagged across a railroad track and say. You can't live next to me. You can't. We will no longer go there. We will offer critical race. And treatment paradigm. And that paradigm is such what you're doing today, City Council. Renaming the white mob's terrorism. The treatment, the healing. Paradigm for all Americans in Tempe and in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Liam Huggins. Come up and state your name, place of residence.
My name is Liam and I'd like to say that I'm a lifelong Tempe resident. Unfortunately, this is not the first time that I've spoken before this city council or a couple of times, but you know. Cowardly and racist murder of Antonio R. Say by Tempe police. And it's, it's deeply unfortunate to stand here again and have to speak out against another instance within our city. From the shooting of 14 year old Antonio R. Say in 2019 to these Ku Clan members in the 1920s. There's a clear pattern of racism against all people of color that continues to today. As though. History that's persisted throughout the time. A sundown town, meaning that African Americans were not safe after sundown up until the 1960s. As people like Buster have mentioned that, you know, African Americans were driven out of this town in, in, in times where people still living here were alive. You know, I believe that schools, parks and streets ought to bear the names of honorable to allow the specter of white supremacy rear its name on a respected institutions, not only but undermine the security. Color. As many have mentioned before, there's a deeper history of white settlers and colonializers here in Tempe. The city owes a debt that cannot be repaid to the indigenous communities. And those a debt that cannot be repaid to the black communities who have been oppressed and brutalized for far too long. I believe that there is no historical context that protects or changes the immorality and evil of these KKK members. Clearly. Had no issue calling out and attacking the KKK in Tempe. So why be hesitation in attacking the KKK today 100 years later? As somebody who almost went to Gilliland Middle School, I couldn't imagine, you know, the dishonor that it would place on, on me or anybody to go to a school named after a racist, a white supremacist, somebody who was opposed to all sorts of, of diversity, of multiculturalism, things that epitomize. Today. I, I think there's a lot of work yet to be done. And I think this issue right here is one that is clear and easy to do. And this is opportunity to give justice, not only to those brutalized by the KKK members 100 years ago, but to the indigenous people hundreds of years before that, and to the plenty of members of, of black and brown communities who continue to be by the police, by other institutions till today. For this reason, I, I hurt, I deeply, deeply encourage this name change and other changes to continue forth here across Tempe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jason Noor. Please come up and state your name and place of residence and you have three minutes to address the city council.
My name is Jason Noor. I'm a resident of Tempe and I've lived on occupied Tonodum land for the last. I do firmly believe that this council will make the decision to rename these places. That is. As concerned about tonight. I think that there is a more difficult decision here tonight, and that is recognizing in Tempe's racist past. Before me have come up and highlighted that this town was a sundown town until 1967, which means that African Americans could not spend. It's here. Property. It was an early use of race covenants in our neighborhoods, including in the Maple Ash neighborhood, which means that not purchase homes in that neighborhood. Has a racist past. And I think that's been clearly demonstrated tonight for many people here. And renaming these places is only the beginning of actually dealing with that racist past. If this council adopts this resolution, I am currently not satisfied with who it has chosen to represent our community and the communities affected by this. As highlighted by people tonight, indigenous people have been left out of the conversation. Land was taken to them, taken from them by settlers. The people who are going to be on this, on these committees to rename these places are from certain backgrounds. As we know, they're wealthier and whiter than other places in this. That is in no part, in no small part due to redlining and racism that has foundationally built this city. So I'm asking that this council think about who it's going to put on representing this, to actually rename these places. When we rename these places, it shouldn't just be the people that we have been appointing to these committees. Be doing this. We know that they will come from wealthier backgrounds. We know that they will come from white backgrounds. And I know that there are diverse people that are going to be represented here, but I really want you to consider who your committees. I know. Is not completely representative of this state. I know that this council comes from more wealthy backgrounds that 85281, the most diverse and the most poor zip code in the city has no representative on council.
Actually, I, I live in 8521.
You live in 8521? Awesome. Well, I stand corrected, but in any case, point being, I ask this council to really consider who they're going to be appointing, how they're renaming. Really deal with racism in our community. I did want to touch on policing. I did want to touch on development in our gentrifying. There's few. City. And they face majority of gentrification. So that's all my time.
Thank you. I appreciate. I just wanted to make sure I said. But I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Next up, we have Emma Monis. Okay, please come up and state your name and place of residence and you have up to three minutes.
Emma. I'm a resident of occupied Oodam and Hokam land in Scottsdale, Arizona. I'm a student at ASU in Tempe here, studying to be an educator in Arizona. If you vote not to these names now, I hope to God that by the time I am a teacher, potentially in one of these schools. Graces are dismantled. This is not changing history, but recognizing history. Keeping these names. Repetuate white supremacist violence. These names are emblems and glorifications of literal KKK members. Even as a white person with extreme privilege, as a Jew and trans queer person, I know that the KKK also has hate in its heart for my communities. But most critically, the black community has endured literal terror, toxicity at the hands of the KKK. Indigenous peoples underwent genocide for any of these schools. Parks to be here and their lands continue to be occupied and desecrated by these spaces. Such black and indigenous people at the forefront of these decisions. I implore the city of Tempe to listen to these communities, to remove these names and to continue taking steps to dismantle the racism the city has been founded on and which endures to this day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Card I have in my hand, I know our clerk has some other cards. But the last one I have here is from Drew Sullivan. Drew, please come up, state your name, place of residence, and you've got three minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Drew Sullivan and I'm a resident of Tempe, Arizona. Start with. Journal of Arizona History from 1973. And the reason I brought this. U student had written a paper on the Klan in the. And this was kind of the tip of the iceberg. Me to research the history of the Klan in the Salt River Valley, but also in. Some of this was researched from about eight, nine years ago. And I wanted to bring this because I know people saying that it feels like this came out of nowhere. But this is a story that took 50 years to become public. And there's a few pieces of research from students at ASU over the 20 years following this 1973 article, including a master's dissertation or master's thesis on. In Tempe. And that was overseen by Philip Vandermeer, who, if you're from. Ends in Arizona, he is, he oversaw the project. He was mentoring that student. And so none of this information has ever been retracted, denounced, removed from circulation or questioned because it stands on solid source material. And that source material came from a leaked list and members from a 1922 raid in Los Angeles. On that roster of Klan members. Were the Phoenix Klan and the Tempe Klan. That information leaked to Colonel McClintock, who was the grand jury. Of a file involved the beating of a Mormon principal in Mesa, a white Mormon principal by the Klan. They convened a separate grand jury to. The leaked names that appeared in a newspaper called Dunbar's Weekly. The grand, which was not a pro or anti Klan grand jury, they, if I recall, I think they actually found the, they ended in a hung jury for the criminal matter. But they found that 18 of the 20 names that were listed were reliable, were found to, by the jury to be Klansmen. And these were of Phoenix. These were the elite of Phoenix and they were recruited through. And they were recruited through an organization called the Merchant and Manufacturers Association. So what this... Came to Mesa, they came to Tempe, they came to Phoenix, and they came to Glendale. And they recruited business leaders to join their organization. Now, the only other Klan chapter in Salt River Valley at the time that had its membership leaked was Tempe. Mason didn't, Glendale didn't. No one from the Tempe roster was subpoenaed. It comes from the same list in which 18 of the 20, and the two who weren't, one of whom didn't attend. It was the Secretary of State who was later found to be a member of the Ku Klux. And this is reliable. Now, there's a challenge, though, that the city of Tempe faces. And as someone who is a student of history, I want to see the city meet this challenge, which is that it seems that this information... Because I never came across Gilliland, never came across Hudson, any of this. It was nine years, eight years ago. I've gone through a lot of primary... There's a name that features prominently on there, and that's Hugh Laird. And that's what I found Hugh Laird in my research in McClintock's notes. Hugh Laird was published in Dunbar Weekly. Hugh Laird became... Hugh Laird became mayor of Tempe not long after that. His brother was leading the case as a defendant in a desegregation matter in which Adolfo Romo, whose name, surname is not on any buildings or parks or streets anywhere in the city of Tempe, in which Adolfo Romo fought Laird's brother to desegregate the Tempe High School. So what I'm saying, though, is that there's plenty of information, and it's solid, but there's also this information that's out now about Gilliland and Hudson. There needs to be some sort of website. There needs to be some context because I can totally believe it. But it's kind of like the later era from a lot of the stuff that I have researched. You know, the place to really start is what is... In regards to Hugh Laird. And even the Laird family segregationists, if not, you know, also... Yeah, I... About it.
Thank you, Drew. Appreciate it. The card I have is from Sean Sisk. And you have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Sean Sisk. I'm based here in Tempe, and I'm speaking to express my support in changing and removing the names Laird, Gilliland, Hudson, Harlson, and Redden. Resident of Tempe, I was sick when I found out the schools that my... religiously named after racist, white Ku Klux Klan members. Disgusted, but I for sure was not surprised because I think it speaks to who we are as a country. In the book, African-American... Experience of... This involves sundowntowns, segregation, and the Klan presence. To have our kids study under and play on the streets named after the perpetrators of this trauma is to disregard the degradation, the dilapidation, and the destitution that my ancestors faced. I love Tempe. I love the diversity and all the different kind of people and cultures that we have. And in the past year alone, we've elected our first black mayor and police chief. So I know for a fact that we have the power to set an example for the cities and the states around us. Dr. Kalid Muhammad said, "If we know what happened yesterday, better today because tomorrow is based on what we do today." We don't want to rewrite history. We just don't want to celebrate white racist Ku Klux Klan members. We're not asking to be liked. We're asking to be respected. I'm glad we're not taking a vote on this matter here because people make up 7% of Tempe, and it seems like the smaller groups always seem to get left out. So I'm definitely glad we're not taking a vote because that wouldn't end well. I think concerned about money for the school should be sent to the... None of these people are when it comes to the backpack drives or the kids hungry or the teachers needing supplies for their schools. So I find that very interesting. And I think it's very important that the... Comes to renaming. We have Indigenous People Land Recognition Act that's on the Tempe website that acknowledges this land belonging. And if we don't bring them to the table or bring them to the conversation, all that's for nothing. It's just bluff. So it's important that we include members, the ones that are least represented. And yeah, I really hope that y'all do the right thing and get these names changed quickly and quickly. I appreciate y'all.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. That is the end of my cards. Madam Clerk, I know you have some cards that you need to read into the record as well, though.
I do have... Robert writes, "I am Robert Bowers, descendant of James Redden. They were Tempe pioneers moved by covered wagon from Northern California in 1888 with eight children, seven boys and one girl, and farmed 310 acres on McClintock near Carver. They had another boy in Tempe making a nine-toe..." "Son Homer was father to my grandfather, Perry Cecil Redden. The family's myriad accomplishments contributing to the early development of Tempe led to the 1974 establishment of a four-acre Redden Park, named as a tribute to their..." "My understanding is..." "... building at the old Cuyahoga School at McClintock and Warner was a 10-by-12 flimsy frame structure." "James donated the money, and the sons helped construct a new and larger building in 1890, with James's school board from 1889 to 1898. That school is where Redden Park is now located. Community services staff learned that some Tempe streets and properties were named for prominent Tempeans also were purported members of the Butte chapter of the Ku Klux Klan, one of four clans in the Phoenix Valley in the 1920s. Agenda item 2E proposes to develop a process to rename these of those Tempeans, also found on the Butte Klan membership roster. I object to renaming generally, renaming Redden Park specifically. Regarding all renaming, the presence of a name on a membership roster is not dispositive evidence of moral turpitude renaming. Were any charged with crimes? And if so, were they... What words are done exhibiting moral turpitude? Looking at the KKK collection material relied upon by the community that recommends, I see that the KKK..." "... until recruiters arrived in the spring of 1921. Klan race folk..." "The KKK recruiter's sales pitch in Arizona was preserving law for alcohol and anti-Catholicism. Recruiters are known to misrepresent..." "... fraud in the inducement. I observe that all Phoenix-area clans collapsed quickly within the KKK criminality over many decades. Nobody at the beginning could foresee the notoriety it would be earned later, especially in the..." "Clans. Generally in law, the movement bears the burden of proof, usually a preponderance of the evidence in civil actions for changing the status quo. Any renaming... ...at least a preponderance of demonstrable moral turpitude. Now, this board is assuming moral turpitude because people signed up for a membership in an organization that at the time had yet to do anything wrong and whose course was untraveled. Signed up for membership..." "... law and order and prohibition of alcohol hardly..." "...tude. Without such a standard, this renaming smacks of woke demagogues arbitrarily and capriciously abusing power in the council culture frenzy. Regarding Redden Park specifically, Susan and James and Susan Delilah Redden, who came to Tempe in the 1820s, really contributed development with all of their..." "Two sons' brief membership in the KKK in the 1920s does not negate that. Thank you for your time and consideration." Next item comes from Harrelson, representing Harrelson Park. She simply writes, "Harrelson's family integrity, proof of Harvey Harrelson belonging to the KKK." Linda Cabrera. Linda writes, "I'm a Mexican-American. I have lived on Laird Street since I was old. As I found out researching as a teen, the word Laird means Scottish lord, which is cool. Laird Street denotes where my grandmother bought land during World War II and raised a large family with my granddad. Laird Street is where so many of my relatives continue to live, including myself and..." "Laird Street is where my pets lived and died, my mother lived and died, and very recently, my grandfather lived..." "Laird Street is home. That name has absolutely nothing to do with the KKK. Through all this junk the past two and a half years, I've heard in constant... And thus, I was greatly upset when I heard people wanted to change my street name. Even if it was named after a member of the KKK, they are long dead, and their views of life are now ridiculed and shunned for obvious reasons. Changing the Laird... The name Laird means changing my history, changing the current victims for no reason. It will also waste a lot of money and time and paperwork and my own taxpayer money. Oh, and as for the other names, Hudson conjures up Stinger Jennifer Hudson or the Hudson River. The other name is just some random last name I've never heard of. I am so upset. Even at the thought of this meeting, I demand anyone in power in Tempe changing street names immediately. No value, extremely wasteful, and in my case, painful to change the Laird Street name. I implore you not to go forward if you're your time and willingness to listen." Next card comes from Genevieve Vega. Genevieve writes, "My name is Genevieve. I am a Tempe resident and have served boards, committees, clubs, and task forces. To trust that my comments be in support of renaming city streets, parks, boroughs in light of recent reports of ties to the KKK. First, I'd like to thank the city staff and volunteers who went through the painstaking effort to research these ties to the city. I was surprised at the volume of their findings and am disheartened at the level these racist individuals have been elevated in our city. I know times have changed, and I am grateful for those changes, and they have reached equality and representation in our city, state, and country. And there is no..." "...to do. There is never a wrong time to do the..." "...should normalize policies, ideas, and outcomes when presented with new information that benefits the greatest good. Celebrating those who fight for the underserved, for justice and equity, and who make Tempe an inclusive place should be our standard. Celebrating a racist past with due..." "KKK is not something to be revered. Preserving history is understandable, but what are you preserving by celebrating those who support an organization who use terrorist tactics to perpetuate rights supremacy? Tempe is a city rich with community, history, and diversity. Traditional things to celebrate. Change in any form is difficult. The cost and effort to make these changes is substantial. By convening a diverse advisory committee to create a plan for renaming and engaging our community for this effort is an excellent process for change. Combined with a communication plan, our residents through this change would also be welcome. Thank you very much for..." "...in support of renaming city assets with a racist past." Next item comes from William Lee. William writes, "Mayor and council members, as a Tempe resident, former 28-year educator with the Tempe Elementary School District, and an inaugural member of the Human Relations Commission that is intention to rename properties associated with the past community leaders who perpetuated a racist philosophy and practice that my family endured for generations in Tempe. Just like my dad spoke out against the segregation of Mexican-Americans at Tempe Beach Pool, saying that he paid taxes and his kids should be able to use the pool, too, I am also asking our elected officials to do what is right by acknowledging..." "...and equity and endeavoring to remove the lingering stigma of racism in our community. While human fallibility has..." "...ignity and suppression of people of color, your efforts to remediate this societal..." "...from our community will reaffirm our shared values and keep Tempe a special place for all people to live, play, work, learn, and grow. Thank you, William." Next card is from Mary Martininiak. Mary writes, "I believe it's important to change the names of Tempe city streets, parks, and schools named after KKK members. As we move through this process, it is imperative that we prioritize indigenous and black voices. We know better. We need to put that knowledge into action and do better. It's the right thing to do." Next card comes from Kelly Quoc. Kelly writes, "Change the names of..." "...parks and schools named after KKK members. Prioritize black and indigenous voices in the process." Next card is from Rachel Nova. "As a member of the greater Phoenix community and an ASU student, I am writing to support the renaming of any and all streets, schools that are currently named after..." "...glorifying and honoring people who actively worked against the freedom and well-being of fellow black and brown Americans is simply unacceptable. Imagine that you grew up on a street named after a person you didn't know. Curiosity leads you to Google them one day. You quickly realize that this... If you met them today, would rather see you dead than see you thriving and free. That's a continuing harm that no city and no American should be part of. This is why I support the renaming proposed in item 2E." Card comes from Cynthia Mc... "Don't move forward if we do not..." "...let's celebrate community members that embrace love and compassion, not anti ideology. We demand that the city of Tempe change all of the names and schools associated with current or former KKK immediately. We also prioritize black and indigenous voices in the process of removing these symbols of oppression. There is no room for hate in this community, not then, not now. You must resume any remaining symbols of hate and oppression in order for the community to learn, grow, and flourish. The only way out is through." Next card comes from Tabor Cook. Tabor writes, "Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is James T. Cook. I live at 955 on a particular road." "The full address. I've lived in Tempe since 2018. I graduated from A.C. June 2016. I am also a native of the Phoenix metro area. We are here to discuss the development of an ad hoc committee to rename streets, parks, and schools that are named in honor of great men who significantly contributed socially, economically, and politically to Tempe in the early days of Tempe. I won't start a history lecture about the history of Tempe, but after reviewing the supporting documents, I saw no evidence that Laird, Gilliland, and Hudson participated in any activity..." "...anybody at all nor motivated ideology. These were men who were elected and reelected by the people of Tempe years, but decades. Memberships to organizations that were involved in community action, a practice that any individual with aspirations of holding a public position would participate in. I'm willing to bet that the members of the council are active members of community organizations or clubs. I'm not here to defend any form of hate or violence that was committed by gangs of hateful, evil men who did terrible things while hiding behind..." "...and burned crosses in the yards of African-Americans..." "...of the Ku Klux Klan. But the great men who..." "...the development of Tempe from a farm town with a factory to cross the river to the crown jewel of Maricopa County were not those kinds of people. There is no reason to waste the hard-earned tax dollars of the Tempe taxpayers on any efforts to..." "...any of the current streets, parks, and schools. The taxpayers don't deserve it, and the fathers of Tempe don't deserve it." Next, Mario Lucero. Mario writes, "I would like the council to consider that we are moving to change names of longstanding parks, streets, communities, and schools with little more than brief records, as made available in the memo for this meeting. Surely, there must be more to consider before doing away with what are proud and established places here in Tempe. Had we, first of all, considered the times when these men were leaders of our community? Does our amazing city and county not..." "...history of being led guided by similar men? I don't think we should hold that against who we are today. Could these men have grown and changed their mindset that they grew in..." "The late Senator Robert Byrd from Virginia acknowledged as much as his own life. He was applauded by no less than two of our most recent leaders, Presidents Joe Biden and Barack Obama. The descendants of these men just be generalized by all of us for mistakes their fathers made? I'm waiting to see the research that shows that they, too, are awful humans. Changes like this are knee-jerk reactions..." "...as few and actually benefit even fewer. I hope that Tempe can be leaders in recognizing the faults of our forefathers and being better for their mistakes. And honorable and meaningful steps will do far more for fairness and equality for all..." "...than just forgetting about it all. For record, I am Hispanic Catholic that absolutely has some understanding of unfair judgments. I dare say that I would be right in the sights of the men in question. However, they're gone. The world is different, and we are all better people. Thank you." Next card from Sophia Ryland. Sophia writes, "The community of Tempe should not be a place where the legacy of..." "...is commemorated, celebrated, or respected. The violence perpetrated by the KKK and the legacy of white supremacy it represents should not be uplifted by our city. It is imperative that the names of Tempe city streets, parks, and schools are renamed, and it is equally imperative that the indigenous and black voices are prioritized in this process. If these changes are not made, the cycle of violence against indigenous and black community members will be legitimized and allowed to continue unaddressed and unbroken. This is unacceptable, This is unacceptable, and so I demand that the city council get rid of these names and listen to the Indigenous and Black communities affected in order to build a better version Final card comes from Matthew Johnson. Matthew writes, the argument being raised about not changing the names to preserve the city's history, would you suggest Germany remade its streets after leaders to preserve that country's history? Being a landmark after an individual is not preserving history is a test and an endorsement of their actions. Not wish to live in a city that is degraded is disgusting. Mayor, that closes the comment for this item.
All right, thank you very much, Clerk, really appreciate it. Next up, I'm going to go ahead and call upon Keely Barvell-Hartzell and Brenda Abney to come forward. Where did you see Keely? Virtually, okay, sounds good.
wanted to let you know that I can't hear the mic from the WebEx app, so I see the slide up, therefore I'm speaking. Okay, thank you. All right, hopefully you can hear me. I'm here to report on the background research and the findings that the museum staff did. It's generally been known, at least within history circles, that a chapter of the Ku Klux Klan existed in Tempe. There have been several papers and articles written about it, and the information is included in the museum's publication, African American History in Tempe, which can be viewed on our website. About a year ago, a citizen reported to mayor and city council about a document they discovered that specifically referenced a Klan member, Huey Laird. This brought to the forefront the fact that the city has place names associated with at least one Klan member. With that notification, city leadership requested that museum staff conduct research to see if any other Tempe place names were associated with Klan members. In conducting this research, we found that in the 1920s, the Ku Klux Klan made a concerted effort to establish themselves in communities across the country, including in Arizona. In Tempe, a chapter was formed called the Butte Clan Number Three. The chapter didn't live beyond the 1920s, but during those years, almost 100 Tempe businessmen and leaders were members. Some of those members are associated with current place names in Tempe. The information in the report is supported by primary documents located in the KKK collection of the Arizona Historical Society in Tempe. It contains membership information, correspondence, and other internal records of the Butte Clan. Additional information was found in the McClintock Papers at Burton Bar Branch of the Phoenix Library in Phoenix. And in cross-referencing primary source documents, looking at individual papers in context, and reviewing the fragmented information and association with known Klan officers and members, we were able to confirm the information regarding individual membership in the Ku Klux Klan. The findings of this report, that Tempe has place names with verified Butte Clan members, and those names are Huey Laird, Clyde Harland Gilliland, Esper W. Hudson, Harvey Samuel Harrelson, and Byron A. Redden and Lowell E. Redden. The place names, some place names carry the same name as Butte Clan members, yet were not necessarily named for those specific people. There are multi-generational Tempe families with descendants of the same name. An example of this could be Redden Park. The park is named for the family collectively and not specifically for the Butte Clan members Byron and Lowell. In other cases, names are directly associated with the members, such as place names associated with Hudson, Laird, and Gilliland. In addition, places get their names in various ways, and not all are honorific. In the case of historic properties, for example, the site is named for the previous owner. In developments, names are often chosen by the developers themselves, and of course, some names are named by a city to honor an individual or a family. Keely?
Thank you. Can you get the next slide, please? To sum up, these are the City of Tempe streets and parks that were named after the individuals that the history museum identified with their research. West and East Laird Streets, Hudson Lane, Hudson Drive, and Hudson Park, Harrelson Park, and Redden Park. Though the name Hudson is affiliated with other Tempe landmarks and businesses, including a neighborhood association, the recommendations you will hear from staff tonight focus only on the assets sold by the city, so streets and parks, and they are listed here. Next slide, please. Additionally, there are three schools in the school district that bear the names of Laird School, Hudson Elementary School, and Gilliland Middle School. As you can see, two of the schools share the names of Tempe city streets and one park, though it should be noted that none of the schools nearby the streets or parks that share their names. In anticipation of this information becoming more public, city staff have identified as many known relatives as possible individuals who are KKK membership. Unfortunately, not all of the relatives were identified through this process. The history museum staff, obituaries, property records, and history and genealogy or family tree files available at their research. If staff find addresses for these family members, send a letter via FedEx notifying them of this information and alerting them to the possibility of the city and taking steps to rename the streets, parks, and schools impacted. In that letter, we also offered to meet with any family members to discuss the research that they have, and any concerns or other questions they may have. We have had communication with some family members as a result of the letter and subsequent inquiry from family members that weren't identified and sent letters in advance. Staff has worked with the Arizona Historical Society Archive to make the KKK membership records available to those who would like to view them firsthand, and they still can be viewed if you make an appointment with the archive, the identity there at College and Curry. City staff, Dr. James Driscoll, superintendent of the Tempe Elementary School District, and other members of his executive staff to share information about the findings. This past Friday, Dr. Driscoll has sent a letter to the families notifying them of this information and their plans for potentially renaming the school properties. Details of their process have not yet been made public, but city staff have been in direct communication with the school district and will continue to closely coordinate our work. Lastly, staff recommends that a few other cities have gone through to rename streets and other city property due to similar circumstances. This is how the decision was made, how the public was involved in that process, and any lessons learned about the logistics of implementing name changes, such as cost for the city and residents and businesses impacted. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the City of Tempe rename the city streets and parks that are currently named after the former Tempe community leaders that were documented members of the KKK, Laird, Hudson, Harrelson, and Redden. Recommends that an ad hoc committee be appointed by the city manager in line with the existing city asset naming process outlined in City of Tempe Resolution R. 2017-96. This ad hoc committee would report and recommendations to the city manager, and city staff would facilitate these meetings with transparency and openness. The ad hoc committee's meetings and work would link information about the committee's work in cooperation with our Public Information Office. Upon completion of the renaming ad hoc committee's work, it would report and seek final approval of any new street and park names and other related actions needed to implement those changes. Next slide, please. Though the membership of the ad hoc committee would be based on the committee referenced in the existing naming resolution, we recommend this renaming ad hoc expanded to include more community partners that have interest in this topic. Specifically, here are the city boards and commissions, the Tempe Elementary School, and community and city organizations that staff would recommend be invited to send a representative to this ad hoc committee. Again, the city manager would appoint this, if the council has recommendations for others that were left off, that certainly is something that we could take as some guidance. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that Tempe create a specific website to share information about this renaming issue, research compiled, and the work of the renaming ad hoc committee and the Tempe Elementary School District. Staff further recommends that this webpage also be provided to residents to offer ideas for new names and give other feedback for consideration by the ad hoc committee. Other cities have also listed information on a webpage about how to receive city funds to address resulting from renamed streets and facilities, such as the cost of a new driver's license. Let this type of information be housed at this website as well. The staff also recommends that the ad hoc committee coordinate to the extent possible and practical with the district in considering name changes. Though there are several streets and parks located near each other, but staff feels this should be a coordinated community effort, the Tempe Elementary School District staff is supportive of prioritizing coordination as well. The staff recommends that the committee be directed to focus on landmarks and areas significant to Tempe as potential versus names associated with specific individuals living or dead. For example, an idea was to promote monuments of significance to the tribal communities in the Tempe area. Next slide, please. Staff further recommends that any costs for the city and those in the private sector for street and park name changes be identified, quantified, and included as a request in the fiscal year 2022-23 budget. Reimprovement provided as appropriate to residents and businesses for street names. The city would make recommendations to the city manager, and staff would recommend that the city manager return to the parks at a future age. Additionally, staff would be asking the council for approval of costs associated with name changes as part of the budget process. Next slide. With that, Brenda and I are available to answer any questions in the direction as to our request to move forward with this staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Keely. Thank you, Brenda. Really appreciate the presentation. At this point, I will look to the council to see if anyone has any... Councilmember QB.
Thank you, Brenda, and thank you, Keely. So we've heard a lot of commentary tonight. I thank each and every one who speaks to us. This is uncomfortable for all of us, right? We are deeply aware. We need to face this. I've heard ideas from residents, some people who said that we're judging the people of the past by the values of today. The African-American experience in a book that the African-American Advisory Commission wrote on detailed Governor Thomas Campbell at the time, who saw the list of nearly 900 KKK members in Arizona, and he said, the Klan, I very deeply regret the membership includes some prominent very prominent in several communities. I cannot understand how and why they joined such an organization, allowed their minds, become American intolerances. Tell you all that the KKK was and is a racist organization. Violence, yes, even in our region. If you look at the actual, there's a document, the printed card of the tenants of KKK, and one of the tenants is white supremacy. Another tenant is the pure Americanism, the protection of our pure American womanhood. I mean, they were very clear about their intentions, and you have to remember, this was a secret society. They weren't necessarily, you know, telling family members about their participation. They weren't necessarily passing down to future generations. The patient was a secret society, but through intensive research, but done, you know, thank you, Drew Sullivan, who's a citizen journalist and a historian of history in our town, to bring our attention, to tug on our sleeve, an issue that we all have kind of known about for a while, and a number of us have heard about Laird, but we didn't do anything, is complicity. I've heard people say that we're changing, they're canceling, we're erasing history. This is not an erasure, like Emma said earlier, and I appreciate what you said, Emma. Our city is wrecked. This is an effort to dismantle structural racism in our city, which we swore to, especially when we had the tragic killing of George Floyd. It rocked our community, our souls, and we decided as a city, we were going to at least have those uncomfortable conversations and deal with the structural racism that, yes, it's even in our town of Tempe. The reality is it's changing the names of parks and schools, although we don't have that responsibility, it has to be up to the school district for century values. Cities reinvent themselves all the time. They change names of streets, schools, mountain peaks even, and I strongly want to support the staff recommendation. I want to talk about Alfa Romo. I actually know, I know one of his cousins. He was a American, lived in Tempe, and he had the first desegregation case in the US after Plessy versus Ferguson. His four children denied an education at the 10th Street School. They were only allowed to go to the 8th Street School, which was supposed to be equal then, had no certified teachers. So he sued the school board, Tempe Elementary School Board, and William Laird was the defendant, was listed as the defendant. There was a partial victory. The judge said, yes, your children can go to the 10th Street School, but it was only his children, so let's face it, that wasn't a complete victory. But it was the first desegregation case in the entire history after Plessy versus Ferguson. This is a remarkable case. Imagine the courage of this man. There were 80 members to 100 members of the KKK at that time, and he was challenging the school board, challenging the whole institutional structure of his city at that time. But is his name known to students? Is his name known to the students of Laird School? We don't see those names on street signs. And to me, that is not just an error, an act of violence that we can redress. I want to mention something about Hudson, because Drew, you'd mentioned Hudson, and you have researched, but in speaking to our history staff at the museum, I learned that Esther, Esper, excuse me, W. Hudson was a cotton grower, and he actually did put his Pima long-staple cotton. The streets were named Hudson Street and Hudson Lane, no, Hudson Drive, excuse me, were part of his development. He had a title in the Ku Klux Klan. He had a title. He was a clocan, K-L-O-C-A-N, roughly equivalent to an advisory member. So a dues-paying member of the Klan, he actually had an advisory role in the region. A resident wrote to us, Lisa Olson, and she quoted Dr. Maya Angelou, that when we know better, people say it's a waste of money. Think of better money that we could spend in our city, better expenditure of money, because it's the right thing to do. And as far as leaving out Indigenous voices, please, I think that the rest of the council would agree that there was tension, there were commissions thrown out there. There are members of the Indigenous community that are on this community. I know that we want to center Indigenous voices and Black voices and Indigenous in this conversation. They have to be centered, not just at the table, they need to be at the table. To compensate people, I think, fairly for the time, it's going to be trouble to change your name, to change your credit card, you know, address for your credit card. There's no doubt it's going to be trouble, trouble. And this is one attempt, it's not everything, like some speakers have said, we need to do far more, but this is an attempt to bring a little bit of justice, and I know, I can't imagine what the family members are feeling now. I don't mean to minimize that pain, but I think of all the collective pain of residents, and I think of a Hispanic child at Laird School, which is a majority-minority school, and every day, they have to go into that school, and they see that name, and they know now that Laird was a segregationist. His brother was a segregationist. He was a racist. He was a white supremacist. So, you know, we have to think about future generations, that kind of harm to our young people is not something, as a council member, that I can continue in good conscience. So some people have said, in conversations with friends and community leaders, that Laird for a long time, it's like, why didn't we do anything about it? We had the opportunity then, we didn't do it, now we have the opportunity. And so I really thank staff and the history museum staff for all of their work. I know that work's going to continue. To me, we're not making a vote tonight, we're not deciding. From my understanding, we're not deciding what's going forward, but it's about the process, and we want the process to send Black and Hispanic voices. We want to celebrate some of the people in history, like the Green family, that were first Black settlers, that nobody, African-American Advisory Committee knows about them, they wrote about them in their book, but there are so many other people in our city that are, and that's what we're raising with that. I just, so much for all the work that the staff has committed. I know more work, there's been questions here tonight, and I understand that, you know, we will be more, give more information to our residents about the research that we're doing. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the time.
Thank you, Councilmember QB, really appreciate your comments. Any other members of council would like... Oh, Councilmember Garland?
Thank you, Mayor. So my understanding is that we are, are we giving direction to continue with the question that we have?
Yes, as a matter of fact, can we actually, can we give staff recommendations, just so the public can actually see them, so we can remember? just so the public can actually see them, so we can remember?
I would say, look at.
Slide nine?
Well, there's a couple of slides. Let's see, slide six?
All I wanted to say was that I, I know that this is going to be a tough process. It has already been a tough, tough process. Just really appreciate that we are at least addressing this, and I just want to say that I think sharing this information with our community that we have so far, pulling together a committee that is going to continue to do more research, because I really think it's really important that we, we really, you know, cross our Ts and our Is to make sure the information that is accurate, and that when we make these changes, the thing for us to do, giving that information to our community, doing additional research, discussing solutions, and, and then coming back to the council, I think those are really important. And I, I do, as Councilmember QB, just, it's really important that we have our Indigenous voices heard. Other voices are really important, but I, you know, this was originally their land, and I just want to make sure that they are also added to that committee. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Next, Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. I just really appreciate the time and energy, I think, Keely, that you put into it, and Brenda, and all the other individuals that have done a lot of homework, a lot of, I agree with my council colleagues in the fact of wanting to move forward, and really understand, and it's interesting that Councilmember QB mentioned 8th Street. That's because that was where my dad had to go, was to the 8th Street School. So being a son of two Mexican immigrants, but born in Tempe, that's, he had to get his education, though it was really fantastic, and I just want to say thank Connected Tempe and what they are doing. If you that are interested in our history, don't know a lot about our local families, second to Connected Tempe, because they are the ones that are very passionate, very excited to be able to share and preserve our local family history, and I'm so grateful for them because I had an opportunity to sit down with them, and they interviewed my dad. I learned so much about them, I did not even know, and really understood about what their upbringing was like, and how different was, it was from mine. So I certainly think this is an opportunity for us to do the right thing. I agree with Councilmember Garland. I want to make sure we get this right. I would like, I know we talked about the staff recommendations, I completely agree with those moving forward. The one thing I would want to do is just really ensure that we're confirming the documentation of the KKK. I really want to make sure that the ad hoc committee has an opportunity to look at those documents, that they're familiar with it, if they want to do additional research, that we actually help them to ensure they're also comfortable moving forward, bring those back, those recommendations. So that would be the one thing I want to, right? If there is additional information out there, I want to make sure that we have the time to address it as we make the difficult decisions moving forward. So just say thank you for everybody that is here tonight. I know this is a difficult thing to have this discussion about, but I think that we need to have it, and I appreciate everybody's, you know, being so respectful to each other a lot. That is what Tempe values are all about. We, so I certainly appreciate this and look forward to the conversations moving forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Next up, let me go to Councilmember Adams.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm also comfortable moving forward, staff recommendations. I think you did a lot of research and took a lot of time and really, you know, dotted your Is and, yeah, dotted your Is and crossed your Ts. So I appreciate that. I think it's also, I'm very confident in the city that they will include everyone that needs to come. We've had a great history, recent history of doing that, and I know that that will continue. So every population is very supportive of that, and that needs to happen. And I want to thank, thanks to everyone for coming out tonight and, and give us your opinion. I learned a lot tonight, and I love to learn, so that was, that was really good, and, but I am supportive of moving forward in this process. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember DeVar?
Thank you, Mayor. I do appreciate staff putting time into this, as I do appreciate our community coming out, speaking on their opinions on this subject matter, not only for even the audience, but us up here. You know, we have four minorities, and, you know, we talk about what Tempe is all about, being a diverse city. We embrace that. I think our community, I think that it goes without, you know, no question that we obviously would not support a KKK situation, you know, that's part of our city. What has been said, you know, I do want things right, want to make sure that we are not, to the gentleman, getting the wrong person, you know, messed up with the other person. I also want to make, as we know, family members do change, or family members have been recognized in that, the other individuals, and they're either being lumped in so much and so often, we paint everybody, you know, the same because they're within certain groups, and it's just wrong, you know? That are probably doing bad things, and a person standing next to that person, and all of a sudden, they're now painted, so I want to make sure that we make sure that we, 100% get this right. I think a second, with the committee, I think also some other public input, you know, from our residents, you know, however that goes, or are setting those things up, because this is going to be, we're going to have, and whatever part of this, we do have to answer questions. You know, people are going to change addresses, they're going to have to change a number, not to say that it is a good or a bad thing, got to recognize that. This council has to be respected for it, and we have to make sure that going forward, how do we address other things? And I'm going to speak frankly, because I, I've heard comments from both sides of this, you know, comments to when's the next thing? What's the next thing? And when is the next thing going to be? And how far down do we, those are comments that come to me, to the other side of the comments of, we have to do more, we have to address more, to start. So there is a balance that we have to try to get to, for sure. We have to try to get, because as we see through this nation, we're polarizing ourselves, you know? Is that the polarizing? Eventually, we got to get to the healing of this stuff. And we, as a society, and I know as a city, you know, we all try to change, we all try to change, and we all try to do better. And believe me, no one on this council is perfect, and nobody out there is perfect either. So, you know, we all have to check our family history, because I'm mixed, there's mixed, there's white, there's everybody. It's almost, do I denounce my name because of someone's actions? You know? How far this thing will go? Appreciate this, this conversation, I appreciate what we're talking about, but I do want a second set of eyes, and I personally want to talk to the, the people at the History Museum, and I personally, the information of what they're going through and how they got to it, going to help me grow too. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeVar. So now, I'm in full, on this too. When I was listening to some of the conversations, we have a number of things about, we just talked about this this evening, the need to step forward, but also quickly to take other steps forward, going, you know, going forward. It's not just a matter of simply, of parks, or schools, or streets, or things of that nature. It is about kind of taking a comprehensive look at who we are and who we want to be moving forward. One of the things I remember back in 2008, 2009, having a conversation with the late Edward Smith, who sat down with me at the Starbucks, I remember, over by the old Whole Foods at Rural and Basin, and had a conversation with me, and said, you know, Corey, one of the concerns that I have as a person who's an African-American man, decades, is I go to even the Tempe Museum, and I go to a lot of other museums, and I don't see a lot of the history of our, of our folks that's represented in this, no, because I have people who have lived here for 20, 30, 40, and 50 years, but if you go to the museum, you're not, you don't see anything there. It's almost like a lot of us didn't exist. And just from that decision to start actually talking to a lot of other people that he knew, who were just friends of his, who had been in Tempe for decades, and they started telling their stories and telling oral histories, which turned into, you know, a book about the African-American experience, and turned into an exhibit that currently exists to this day and is still being consistently updated. I was learning all types of things. As someone who's only lived here since 2003, I learned tons of things about the history of African-Americans and Latinos and many other people, and Indigenous people who've lived in Tempe, and just, and a lot of that history, frankly, just was not being told. But as a lot of people have talked about tonight, it's time to, it's long past time to start doing even deeper dives into that history, and making sure that we're telling the story of this city and of all, and of all cultures currently. And I think it's time, I, I really, you know, I know this is going to be a difficult process, but the fact of the matter is Tempe has taken up things like this before, in terms of assembling a diverse group of people. We most recently had something with the Public Safety Advisory Task, where we took 22 members of our community. Some members, some were members of Tempe, some didn't live in Tempe, but they were people of all different backgrounds who came together to have a conversation about the future of public safety in our community. And I have no doubt, based on how that effort was run, and that was all run virtually due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the inability of us all to meet in person. You know, imagine having those conversations and not having the ability to sit in the room with someone while having them. We now are fortunately having meetings in person again. This is our second meeting back, and I have no doubt that, you know, given the incredible amount of work that our staff has done, not just the museum staff, but frankly, all of our staff, information, doing the research, we can assemble a diverse group of people. And as people talked about, as was mentioned by a lot of folks, I know it wasn't mentioned specifically, I think Councilmember QB might have spoken to this, you know, there are definitely, you know, native people and Indigenous people who are on some of our current boards and commissions, and who would be represented through the board, actually put up on that slide. But I think it's important to make sure, we're specifically reaching out to the, for the Southern tribes, we have relationships with a lot of, we are very, very connected to, you know, to our Indigenous people. Frankly, we passed a land acknowledgement statement earlier this year for the purpose of affirmative gesture, but really for the purpose of recognizing whose land this was and who, and who was here frankly first. And I think it's, and I think to do honor to that statement, and what we've talked about in the past, it's important to make sure that, that Indigenous people are frankly front and center, and a very big part of the process, if we're going to have conversations about renaming streets and landmarks and parks. My perspective, you know, as I said, I know this is a process for many a community, and I understand that, and, but at the same time, I do feel that this is the responsible thing to do, when this kind of information comes to light. You know, this council, and I appreciate what Mr. Dare said earlier, there was never any attempt to suppress this information. You can't find out, and then make a decision to not present that information to the public. We have a responsible elected leadership of this city, that when we come across information like this, to make sure that we put it out there, we have a conversation in open public, and we give our residents the opportunity to see everything, and have conversations about this. So I was very happy, Keely, that you and Brenda were talking about the ad hoc committee that the city manager would appoint. Those meetings would also be public, and members of the public would be able to see those conversations evolve, surprised at the point that any final recommendations are made to the city manager or made to this governing body. So I think that transparency is really important, and I'm really happy that you've built that into the process that you suggested. So with that said, I'll go ahead and close, but I, I support, and I think it's important that we move forward, and Mr. City Manager, I guess we'll look to you for the next steps.
Mayor, just one more thing?
Yes, Councilmember DeVar?
No, I just want to say one more thing, just to be, everyone knows, us asking questions is doing our due diligence. We have to, okay? We have to look at both sides, we have to look at both things. So I appreciate the comments with the gentleman in the red hat, I appreciate the family members that came up, I appreciate the gentleman in the back who had historical knowledge. That's why we have these meetings, so everyone understands. So we take it this way, take it that way, we have to take the ride, right? Because we have to get it right. So please respect the fact that we're trying to do our best up here as a council, because these are hard issues. These are hard issues, and we are wanting to make change. And you can see by the folks here in Tempe, we are a city that, that enjoys the change that we make in Tempe. So please respect, thank you guys for bringing up your comments. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else from council want to make any further comments or, or any discussion?
One more thing about practicalities.
Yes.
I think it's important to include, to, for us to think about having a navigator, once the renaming decisions, that we could, you know, there's not everyone's on the internet, so we have somebody who would help a resident go through the process. I know the city Phoenix produced a whole, like, paper so people could see who, but I also know our city can change the name of utilities en masse, so that would be a really important thing to do, to really have a navigator that has direct contact, so people can work with that person. I know that there's up to 400 residents, and there may be, there's businesses too that will be involved, so I think, I think we need to give, you know, respect to that process. But as I said before, you know, it's going to be trouble, but it's good trouble.
No, thank you, Councilmember QB, and I appreciate your comments and talking as well. I know that was, was pointed out on the slides, was the, the need to compensate people, you know, who, the affected people who are going to have to, if you have to change your street name or things of that nature. Look, I moved in May of 2020, months ago or so, if my math is correct, at this late of an hour, and I remember having to, you know, change my driver's license, change my passport, change my utility bills, change, I mean, it was, it's a time-consuming process, and it's one that I do believe that we should compensate people for, but at the same time, I do believe that the overall mission of what we are trying to accomplish in really confronting the things that we've learned is, that is worth having to spend a little bit of time changing some of these bills, and changing some of your names on certain things. I, taking process, I very recently went through, and it's, but I think this is a critical issue that we have to confront, and if that's, if that ends up happening, we will obviously identify a way to make sure that we compensate households and individuals that have to go through that process, but I think this is far too important to ignore. All right. With that, Keely, I guess, and Mr. City Manager, you have all the direction you need?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. All right, one quick thing here, I want to say, we are still getting some of the sound quality, unfortunately, continuing to plow very far forward with this meeting. I mean, obviously, people who are here can hear what's going on, but that means staff or Tempe Channel 11 is not hearing what's going on. However, I do want to say to Lynda Knutson, who I see, I know she was the only other public comment that I had here, I wanted to ask, would you like for me to postpone the item, or would you like to, because you've been here, I don't want to send you, I don't want to send you home without the opportunity to speak. So we'd like, we can take one more item, if that's okay with everybody. I probably will then want to postpone the remainder of this meeting, just to give residents at home an opportunity to really hear what the council's having, and obviously, the comments that our residents are making. But with that said, let's.
So we are going to do the step manual.
Yeah, go ahead and do that, because we do have a member of the audience who's been here and who's been waiting patiently for that. So item 2C, which is the Streetscape and Transportation Enhancement Program, Iwerson, and I believe, and I think Kathy Hollow may be virtual, or it might just be you, Eric, I'm not sure.
Yeah, well, in the interest of time, I.
Oh, actually, you know what? You're right. Thank you, Councilmember QB. I made a mistake, Eric, I need to take the public comment first, so I apologize. After that long lead, I made a mistake, and looking at my, so, I'd invite up Lynda Knutson on item 2C to speak. Please hit your residence, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
And Mayor, I do have one card as well, when she's.
You do? Ah, surprises.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for having me here. I, I would be remiss if I didn't say what a difficult subject that last one was, and really hard, and I do appreciate all the, you know, the hard work you guys put into these type of matters. It does matter to all of us. And second, I'm so happy that I live in a city where the council, the leaders of the city, and also CDC guidelines, and have us wear masks at places like this. It makes me feel much more comfortable, so thank you. My three minutes, but I'm sure it did. I'm one of the, the stakeholder committee for the step manual update. Comments will address some of the concerns about the revisions that are being proposed by the consultant and the staff tonight, in particular, petitioning. The step manual is asking for a three-tier system for consensus. That's what's being proposed, and this requires immediately adjacent households to a proposed traffic calming device to have a 100% support for the mitigation device built, and I think this is, is too restrictive. Allowing one household to stop a proposed safety measure to the majority of households to favor the measure, but it also may perpetuate an unsafe traffic problem on that residential street. If a study's been completed, the relevant data supporting calming, it seems to me that it would be in the best interest of the city to implement traffic calming in order to keep the residents. Too many times, we think of traffic mitigation as just a speed hump, and it's not. There are traffic mitigation devices that are actually closures in intersections and diverters. I'm here to say that those closures and diverters. I'm here to say that those closures and diverters affect every single person on the street, even the four people that sit on that corner, those. In some of our oldest neighborhoods, we have situations where seven only homes on larger parcels are being purchased by developers, and multiple housing units are being built on the purchased land, creating several small parcels. A good example is the southeast corner of Ninth and Wilson, where six homes now occupy a lot where one single family wants, each owned independently with their own parcel. If a traffic calming device proposed for that intersection, each of these six owners get a vote, thereby giving that corner six options for the intersection. If so, what if five, three other neighbors on the other corners and one votes no? According to the three-tier system that's being proposed, the traffic calming device would not be allowed, even after an eight-to-one vote for it. Trying to obtain 100% agreement nowadays is near anything we do. I don't know of one other project plan or process where Tempe required approval, and why this? I have a bit more, but I can stop right there.
Mr. Mayor, could we give-
I was going to say, if you want to take another minute, Lynda?
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone who has tried to obtain signatures for this knows how difficult it can be, and I look at Councilmember Garland, because I know she has. In the last two years, our neighborhood tried to get three simple speed cushions on 13th. After an engineering company, that 6,589 vehicles entered and exited that street off of Mill Avenue in a 24-hour, we had an 80% approval from all stakeholders on 13th Street, who, one person who owned a property adjacent to one of the speed cushions who would not support the idea, she didn't live there or even in the neighborhood, but said, "I don't think there's a traffic problem, and besides, I don't like speed humps." She was able to derail this project at that corner. I believe it's important to hear everybody's voice in the neighborhoods when it comes to these type of mitigation plans, but I also feel that the process of making our neighborhood's streets safer is the most important. Data that shows a street has large amounts of cut-through traffic, high-speed ball, and the majority, we need to go with that, not 100%. Thank you very much, and thank you for the extra time.
Absolutely, Lynda, thank you so much, appreciate it. Carly, you said you have one more comment card?
I do. I have a card from Heather Throop, resident of Tempe. Heather writes, "Dear Councilmembers, thank you for considering to consider changes to the step manual. I appreciate the city's efforts to modernize this important document. Tempe residents, some power in maintaining a safe neighborhood. I have reviewed the proposed changes outlined in this evening's presentation, and wanted to express my concern regarding petition thresholds. As I'm sure that you can appreciate, democratic government functions largely because we are able to move forward with this, reflect the voice of the majority, differences of opinion. Requiring 100% of neighbors to vote in favor of anything is a relatively high bar to set. Traffic safety decisions should not be held by a minority of residents or non-resident property owners who have dissenting opinions from the majority. Furthermore, it is not clear to me what, quote, 'other agencies,' unquote, compare, how similar they are to Tempe, but the minority of these, five of 11, required 100% support. An excessively high bar will disempower neighborhoods from citizen involvement, self-governance, and neighborhood improvement projects. The proposed professional judgment option is a possibility in the case of less than 100% support. However, this puts us in the uncomfortable position of opposing vote. If professional judgment ultimately rule, why bother asking opinions? A democratic vote that represents the opinions of the majority who decide to vote is the gold standard for our society. Neighborhood traffic planning should be an exception. Thank you for listening to my concerns, respectfully, Heather Throop." And that concludes the input, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Eric, I guess I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the presentation's been pulled up, we will try to go through this quickly, this presentation, in the interest of all our time. I'm the interim deputy engineering and transportation manager, or director, I have Kathy Hollow, our city traffic engineer, who's going to go through some of the dip burner from Lee Engineering, who has been working on this manual. Just, we do have more information related to the issues that some of the public comment has been brought up tonight, specifically related to this issue of 100%. So we are seeking your comment tonight on that particular item, and there is a slide in here that we'll kind of get to that information a little bit. So I'm going to ask our consultant, Randy and Kathy, to take the next several slides and hopefully go through those as quickly as possible.
Okay, we will do that. Good evening, everyone, I'm Kathy Hollow, I'm the city's traffic engineer, and we're here to present a proposed update to the step manual. Step is the Streetscape and Transportation Enhancement Program. With me tonight is Randy Dipburner of Lee Engineering, he'll be assisting with the presentation. Next slide, so back in September 2020, we presented an overview of the existing manual as shown here to council, and the manual was last updated in 2008, and at that time when we presented it, council asked if we could take a closer look at the policies and guidelines in the manual and determine if any changes should be considered. So the city hired Lee Engineering to research and prepare an update. Next slide, this process was guided by a stakeholder advisory group, and included review of other cities, a public meeting, and online survey. And the online survey, we received over 100 comments. Next slide, we also presented to both the Neighborhood Advisory Commission and the Transportation Commission, we presented early in the process, and then we presented it again recently, as these dates show, the Transportation Commission voted in support of the changes that were presented to them. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Randy to kind of present the pros and cons of the current manual and then the proposed changes, and the proposed change includes a new name, which will hopefully make it more recognizable program for residents to be able to use, so, Randy?
Kathy, thank you very much. I am Randy Dipburner with Lee Engineering, and I'm happy to be here this evening to talk a little about the changes proposed to the step manual. On the next slide, we show the, some of the pros and cons of the step program that we learned about through some of that outreach that Kathy talked about. The existing document does really emphasize that partnership between city staff and residents to find the right balance of traffic calming devices for each neighborhood. Lots of different devices are available, and city funding is available, and we learned from our review of other cities that that's certainly not the case everywhere. We did find, as some of our public commenters pointed out, that petitioning is the most difficult part of the process. In particular, contacting absentee owners is sometimes difficult. And also, we learned that the step manual envisions using conventional hard copy petitions, or what I'm calling old-school technology, that is sometimes difficult to manage, particularly in the new connected era. On the next slide, we show the old step manual and the proposed new step guide, the guide to replace it on the next slide, which we're calling the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Guide. So what I want to do today is talk a little bit about some of the changes that we're proposing as part of the transition, in addition to the title. But first, on the next slide, I want to talk about project scale. The step manual envisions two different scales of projects. Next slide, a small-scale project, which is envisioned to include minor changes to the roadway and would include speed cushions or other minimal physical devices, and large-scale projects, which would include many physical devices or projects where there is changes to access in a neighborhood. And the main difference there is, large-scale projects typically go through a testing phase, and small-scale projects do not. And I'll just mention that both small-scale and large-scale projects need that neighborhood consensus to be their most successful, and that's something that we're proposing to carry forward as part of the revised Neighborhood Traffic Calming Guide as well. So moving on to the key changes, the first one I'll talk about on the next slide is the issue of speed cushions. The existing step manual doesn't mention speed cushions, but the city does have separate speed cushion guidelines, and we're proposing to incorporate those guidelines into the new Traffic Calming Guide. We're proposing to use the same process for speed cushions as we do for other devices, to sort of make one-stop-shop for traffic calming. Next slide, qualifying thresholds are what sort of traffic characteristics are required on a street in order to be eligible for traffic calming. The existing step manual doesn't have any qualifying thresholds, but in the speed cushion program, the city does have qualifying thresholds, and the primary criteria are these, the 85th percentile speed needs to be at least six miles an hour over the posted speed limit, and there needs to be at least 400 vehicles per day on a given street. We're proposing to adopt those speed cushion thresholds for all devices and make only two changes. One is, for collector streets, we're proposing to increase the volume threshold to 1,000 vehicles per day instead of 400 per day. And secondly, we're proposing to change the speed threshold for streets that are designated as bicycle boulevards or streets that have schools or parks, so that the speed threshold would be reduced to only four miles per hour over the speed limit instead of six, to really acknowledge that those streets are those that may have more tendency for bicycle and pedestrian traffic, and so it lowers the bar for traffic calming a bit. That's an idea that was proposed by our stakeholder advisory group, and we thought it was a great idea. Next slide talks about outside funding. The step manual doesn't address outside funding, but the speed hump policy does say that a neighborhood who wants to use outside funding to install speed humps is permitted to circumvent those speed thresholds that I just mentioned. We are proposing to acknowledge that outside funding is, in fact, permitted in the new Traffic Calming Guide. However, we are proposing that all qualifying thresholds would apply, so neighborhoods using outside funding would still be required to meet those qualifying thresholds and would still be required to go through the same petitioning process as any funding source. The advantage would be that there would be no wait for those city funds. On the next slide, I'll talk about petitioning thresholds, and we've heard a lot about this today, and I guess, I just want to point out that this is, we have heard that this is an area of focus for the community. We talked about it quite a bit as part of our development of this process, but we're definitely interested in the council's input on how we can get this right. The existing step manual has this unique three-tier program. Of all the cities we reviewed, Tempe was the only one that had this three-tier setup, such that anyone adjacent to a device is required to approve, so 100% support. The second tier involves people who live on a street where a traffic calming device is proposed, and in that tier, 75% are required to approve. And the third tier includes other folks in the neighborhood who are affected by a device, and in that tier, 51% are required to approve. So it's a three-tier system, and what tier you are in is related to how close you are to the proposed traffic calming device.
Real quick, Randy, can I ask a very quick question on this? So I'm just curious, you made a comment, and you said, in the cities that we actually surveyed, Tempe was the only one that had this three-tier system. What cities that you looked at, what kinds of systems, was there a one-tier across the board, was there a two-tier system? I'm just curious, because if you're saying that we're the only one that sort of does things this way, I kind of worry, wow, this is going to be a terrible pun, I worry about us being a little out of step.
A great question, and I don't know, Eric, do you want to take that, or do you want me to jump in?
Yeah, you can go ahead, Randy. I would say the next slide will give a little bit more information about some of the various things that cities- It was really set up, I think, to represent it as it was set up to protect every voice in the community, every resident, every city. And what we're seeing in the next slides is that really consensus and majority support and all the other checks and balances that we have with our public outreach and with our capital projects, including testing, that you're able to reach all those voices. So I think what you're seeing is there's an evolution with other cities that are looking at maybe a simplified version of how you get approvals, instead of having those specific percentages in your system. Go ahead, Randy, on this slide.
Right, sure, and just to maybe expand on that, it is very typical to find an agency that has what I would call a two-tier system, where they would require 100% support from parcels adjacent to a device and would have some reduced percentage for the rest of the affected neighborhood. And in fact, on this slide, we show that of the 11 agencies we contacted, there were five that had that 100% support requirement for folks adjacent to a traffic calming device. We also found one that strongly seeks the 100% support, which we believe means that they don't have a formal policy in place, but they do understand the benefits that that can provide. Three do not require 100% support, and those three just have one tier for their petitioning requirements. And the final two on this slide do not require 100% support either, but they will move devices away from parcels that are opposed to a traffic calming device in front of their property. So that would apply to a device like a speed cushion, where you may be able to move it down 100 feet or 200 feet and avoid a parcel that is opposed. So that really has a very similar effect as requiring that 100% support from the adjacent parcels.
Before you go on as well, Councilmember QB has a question?
The cloud, the meetings are listened in, and I know there was, I mentioned this earlier too, that we wanted to see peers, town and gown cities, and some of the cities that were looked at and the stakeholders that we saw, Mason, Gilbert, and Chandler, and those suburban cities, where a little bit more urban, especially in the area of, you know, Maple Ash, which has been, you know, a focus of this and a focus of the stakeholder interest. So of these 11 agencies, is this some of the new information here, that when you include cities that are like Flagstaff, and maybe Tucson, and Austin, and Boulder, and Madison, the cities that are actually, have the same kind of urbanness to them, related to universities?
Yes, Councilmember QB, the information you're seeing, next one, is that, yeah, so you'll see here-
Thank you.
Those comparisons.
Thank you.
Right, so-
Randy, yep, go ahead, continue.
I apologize, the audio is just a little choppy coming from the chambers there, so I'm not able to hear every single word, but I'm doing my best to try to understand. So this slide does show the cities that have the different requirements when it comes to adjacent parcels. And so there are the five local jurisdictions on the left there that do require the 100% support. Some of those have wording that is different than just adjacent, some of them say, everybody within 100 feet of a proposed device, for instance, needs to be supportive. The jurisdictions in the center there, the ones I'm calling encourage 100%, have different ways of encouraging it. In some cases, as I mentioned, they are eager to move devices away from parcels that are opposed, and that also includes Prince George's County, which is the jurisdiction that has that language that I mentioned earlier called strongly seeks 100% support. The agencies on the right, Flagstaff, Boulder, and Madison, do not require 100% support from adjacent properties, and so their support requirement is limited to just the single tier of the neighborhood that is affected by a traffic calming device. So on the next slide, I'll move on and talk a little about online petitioning. The existing step manual, as I mentioned at the very beginning, is really focused exclusively on hard copy petitioning, but we are proposing to allow the city to provide an online petition platform to residents who are circulating petitions as a supplement to hard copy petitions, which we believe would be a much easier way to reach out to, particularly a very large community, going through a petition process. Particularly in the age of COVID, we have learned that it is not a given that somebody's going to answer the door when a stranger knocks, so having an alternative way to collect signatures is pretty important. On the next slide, kind of a related item, we talk about city outreach. In the existing step manual, it's envisioned that the community members, the residents, are the ones that are primarily conducting that outreach to their neighbors and talking about the traffic calming plan and talking about the pros and the cons. And anecdotally, we've heard in- And anecdotally, we've heard in some cases that the presentation of that information might not be entirely unbiased. And so we are proposing that the city, upon request, mail information to the folks within the petition boundary with information about the proposed traffic calming plan, what the traffic calming process is all about, and provide a link to that online petition so that someone receiving the mailing can log on, register their support or opposition to traffic calming and hopefully speed up that petition gathering process. Next slide talks about non-responsive households. Another issue that we heard about from our stakeholders is it's difficult to deal with a household that doesn't answer the door. A household is assumed to oppose traffic calming until they sign a petition in support, according to the existing step manual. We are proposing to retain that general rule, but in the case where a non-respondent is particularly critical to the support of a plan, the city can mail a certified letter to those non-respondents and acknowledge, talk about the traffic calming plan, talk about the fact that something is proposed and ask those folks for input. And the certified letter would say that if no response is received within a certain amount of time, their non-response will be considered support and the plan will be eligible to proceed. So that helps to reduce some of that hurdle that we heard about from our stakeholders dealing with non-responsive households. Next, I'll talk about rental properties. The step manual doesn't provide any guidance on whether renters or landlords are the ones that should be signing petitions to represent rental properties. We're proposing that for single-family parcels, either the renter or the owner is eligible to sign and for multifamily properties such as apartment complexes, either the owner or the manager of the complex would be eligible to sign. And finally, on the next slide, I'll talk a little about professional judgment. This is a new addition that we're proposing to the manual that would allow city staff to use their judgment to modify either the traffic calming process or a traffic calming plan to address an issue that we're not foreseeing as part of the development of this process. And that might involve safety or it might involve land use, several other issues that we mentioned on this slide, but it could involve something else that we're just not foreseeing. We think it's really important for the staff to be able to use their professional judgment to do the right thing for the neighborhood regardless of what it may say in this document. So with that, I think we're ready to open it up for two additional questions.
Great, sounds good. Randy, Eric, so much for the presentation, really appreciate it. I'm going to look to Councilmember Adams.
Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. So I've got some things that I want to say regarding this presentation and how we're handling these. And Eric, this is by no means, we've been, we've known each other for a very long time, so there's no means of an attack on you, so I don't want you to feel that way. It's just observations that I've made going through the neighborhoods and working with the different areas of town. So agreeing wholeheartedly that we need to reduce the percentage of people that need to agree. 100% is not acceptable. That's not how people are voted in or anything else and so I would be comfortable with, you know, 50 to 60% of the neighborhoods are the neighbors in the community voting for different speed controlling devices. I have met with hundreds of residents throughout the entire city about our speeding through the neighborhoods and the problem that includes endangering our children, our bicyclists and our pets. We have, you know, we have drag racing in our neighborhoods. I've seen it many times. You know, people are going to get really badly and I've worked with the police department. I've talked to them a lot about it too and they're aware of it and everything they can do and but what's happening is people from California are coming over to drag race because our streets are wide and we don't have speed cushions. So it's a free-for-all and they're coming from Phoenix, driving on baseline and into our city and racing around our streets. So that's a big problem that we need to continue to address. I've spent a lot of time walking around Linda's neighborhood and watching people flying through her. I just don't understand why it's so difficult in our neighborhoods. It just seems like we're making it much more difficult than it needs to be. And College Avenue is another example. I ride that frequently on my vehicle from Southern, well, I ride it for a long ways. But anyway, between Apache, it's very dangerous. They begged for speed humps there and bumps and we haven't gotten, you know, done and I've witnessed, you know, I've almost gotten hit by cars. People get hit, children walk, the children are walking and people are flying through the neighborhoods and I just, it's unacceptable. I've repeatedly requested speed cushions on the roads and I feel like I haven't gotten anywhere on it and I think it's because our process is so good to get them through that we are really not taking care of our neighbors like we should. So many residents have begged me for speed cushions in their neighborhoods and I've witnessed speeding going by where they were telling me about how everyone's speeding. So it's like firsthand knowledge. During my tenure in Public Works, we were able to put speed cushions up much more easily. It wasn't this long bureaucratic process that has become the norm. This needs to change. It really needs to change and it's a, and we need to really take this much more seriously to get done for our neighbors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Counsel, any comments or questions? Councilmember Aronado Savage.
Great. Nice to see you again. Thank you again for all your assistance at Valley Metro today. So we, just a couple of things. I just want to go back to original background information in regards to how this committee was put together, right? I want to ask you and just reiterate, tell me who was part of this focus group? You mentioned a couple of things that I didn't really, I didn't see the background information before, but are we seeing any different information that they didn't see? You talked about the comparison cities that Councilmember QB mentioned, I get that, but did this focus group get that data also?
The one slide that's in here that has blue comparison of the peer cities that shows the college communities that are kind of more matched with Tempe, that slide was, has been discussed. It was new in this packet though. It was new for the materials for council tonight. There has been a lot of discussion through commission, through Neighborhood Advisory Committee and the Steering Committee that has been looking at this for the last multiple.
Okay, well, I guess I just was confused because I didn't see that information in my package and have that slide.
Yeah, that slide is new and I sent it through the clerk today. We got the permission to do that and so I tried to say that we were working with the materials tonight.
Okay, so that, I just want to be clear. The focus group did not see that material or they did?
There's been discussion about it, they have not seen that slide.
Okay, I understood.
There's been a lot of discussion about 100% and peer cities. It's been, it has, I'll be quite honest, in the last month, it has been really fleshed out because it has emerged as a very significant issue. Usable, that is friendly to the neighbors, something that gives the neighbors to take control of and have a strong voice happening with traffic in their neighborhood. I think we've made a lot of good, you know, some good movement in the document that's making it easier for the neighbors. This particular issue has emerged in the last six weeks and it has emerged as, really the 100% has emerged as the thing that needs to be fleshed out.
Okay, so I guess that's why I'm confused because there is support, the draft guide.
Correct.
But now you're saying it's not.
We, as of tonight, we are asking for guidance on a particular issue of 100%. We are not, we're asking you to support the doc as it is with guidance on that 100%.
Okay, I just want, thank you for that, but I'm not done. I just.
Good, I hope that helps.
I'm confused, I wanted to make sure I got it right and I certainly do appreciate that. So I want to ask you a couple of questions in regards to, I think one of the concerns I see that could be raised is when we talk about the rental properties, I think that slide, and then you write in there, it's the proposal family renter or owner may sign. Does one, is it and/or or is it just or? That being kind of conflicting because I know we have a lot of single-family owners that are here and that want to be engaged and present within what happens within their neighborhood where they own a rental home. So does one carry more weight than the other?
No, what we try to do is we try to give everyone in the community a voice and with all of our public outreach, any project that we do, we accept feedback. Sometimes it cancels itself. We want to take feedback through a process like this or any capital project that we and if it comes to a dispute, if it comes to something where we would have to really dig deeper, then we can do that. Basically, we give an equal to a renter or you can have renters that are here for a house and they have a significant investment happening on that.
It shouldn't say or, it should say and/or. I'm saying I'd seen one of those things that can cause some confusion. I think we need to be very clear about whatever that direction is and I think that, you know, it'd be wise back and I would, I guess I would like to, my renters, single-family homes, do we have data in them, especially single-family homes that are listed as rentals? I know that's one of the, I want to say Shawna had that data and we went through when we were talking about student housing and things and so that'd be great to have that information and get that updated, I think. And then I know there was also a mention of individuals that are maybe out of state that are owners, that are homeowners. I'd kind of just like to know the data about that also, you know, how many is that? Is that a continuous problem, which I don't doubt. I know my neighborhood is full of a lot of renters right now and I don't even know who the owners are that own these, but that's not with all of them, but the majority. So I totally understand that. I think that needs to be clear. And then lastly, when it comes to the percentage, I think one of the ways that maybe we can, we change the percentage from 100%, maybe we lower that a little. The only way we would really embrace that would be is if we could do like on Broadway Road, Eric, and include the testing measure because I really do think that creates a forward focus of transparency and knowledge of a project that's coming down so the residents can really get engaged and understand what it's going to be and hopefully it'll be a positive experience. I know people were super upset at Broadway, but when we jerked and then we got all that feedback back, you know, everybody had an opportunity to talk to us and tell us what their concerns were, able to kind of put out a lot of the fires before they happened and before we actually did the project as a whole. So that would be one thing I think could be really beneficial and then hopefully not cause so many waves. So if we do reduce that number, I wouldn't go to 50%, especially if you're an adjacent person, but I could see that coming down to maybe like a 75%. I like the other percentages where they are that is recommended. So I could see that if we implement another stage that actually creates that experience so people understand, give us more feedback and input and completely understand and hopefully be on board. And also I would say, I would consider this a work document. I mean, we haven't updated it for 13 years, that's a really long time. And so I think that the next project that we do, it might be a test case, do an evaluation after that project is completed to see that if these new steps that we put in place have been positive and impactful or do we need to make changes? The testing, to mention what that is, but it's actually when you, you know, so people actually will experience what it could possibly, we did that on Broadway Road.
It's standard, yeah. It's a great question, Councilmember, and we, it's much all of our capital projects that involve a significant change to the street. You put up plastic bollards and other devices to simulate what the permanent device would be and Councilmember Aronado Savage is mentioning Broadway Road, that's one of a recent, well, not too recent now, but it feels like we closed a lane of traffic, we checked the, what impact was from that. Any project in this man, not every project, you can't simulate speed cushions, but diverters, traffic circles, all those kinds of things, you can test those and that's a great way to get a feel for if you have majority support or if you have 70% support or 51% support. So we would include that, that is part of most all of our capital project processes.
Thank you, Councilmember Aronado Savage. I'm going to go to Councilmember Garland and then Councilmember Devaro.
Thank you, Mayor. So I liked the manual, I read through the whole thing. I just have to say that I liked on the first, the second page, you have other traffic resources, so people, ways of calling and getting the, with the calming of the streets if it doesn't go, speed humps or anything like that on there, I appreciated that. I also liked, you know, that on page nine, you guys were talking, there's four different times you mentioned that the staff will be there to help you alone. And as Linda had mentioned earlier, I have said that I got speed bumps on my street in my name, really long process. I had to drag three babies with me and knock on doors for a very long time trying to get those signatures. We did have a house and that was going to have a speed hump right in front of their house and we had to get them to sign it, they had to be that 100%. Wouldn't do that, but we did go back to the city and the city came back out and looked at the, went to the house, you know, moved that speed bump a little bit farther and we didn't have to get the 100%. We got the other person to do it. So it does take some time, but I do agree that I think the 100% when you're doing this process, because it's already a lot of work. So I would say, I could see it's going down to 70 or 75%. I would go a lot lower than that because you really do have your neighborhood bought-in process and I think you need to do a little bit more than, you know, 50 or 70. That's my personal opinion. And then the other thing is I, you had mentioned or has mentioned in the presentation about the grant process of this. So there is, is the Marianne Quarter Grant, Neighborhood Grant, is that, are we allowed to use that or are they allowed, neighbors allowed to use cost?
Speed, yes, for speed hump costs, I believe so. And certainly for larger planning efforts like, you know, the downtown neighborhood project that's moving through, that can be used.
Okay, great. And then I will say that I really appreciated that we had some contacts and Councilmember Adams had just mentioned about college that there were a lot of people talking, our neighbors that were calling us and talking about college and I really appreciate your help. What we did do is we went on to college, Councilmember Adams had mentioned, between Apache and Southern and you put down those speed strips. We got the results back from that. The speed strip showed that out of the eight that we put out there, if we look at the new standard, seven, eight, or six of the eight were four miles per hour faster. If we did it to the current standard, it was less than that, but we, there was five. But it, that was really helpful. So now what we've done is we've, that was one process, but if I look at the tiers here and all those things that you guys have listed down, they have actually, the most amount that was on their vehicles is 1,500. They are over the amount on speeds of now almost all of their, the speed strips that were out there. So now they are actually one of those areas that really do need forward for them to be able to get some type of calming on that street. I know that right now we're looking at enforcement in that area, but, and then our council for our human services and community safety committee are going to meet this neighborhood in this area, the first in the, about what we have already done and what we're going to do forward. And I think looking at this book, the step book, to give us an idea of what can be done to move forwards for the process to get, about being able to talk to them about this and I think we're going to drag you with us. So, so thank you so much.
More than happy to.
Thank you so much for what you've done, you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Next up, Councilmember Devaro.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. On the 100% rule, I was thinking about it, yeah, it's ridiculous. I was like, ah, 90, then I was. Uh, I was like, ah, 90, then I was, eh, let's go for a high B. I can go to a B, an 80%, something just, you know, like that. And let's pilot it out, let's, whatever that number is, I, I personally, I would not go down below 75, but something, my preference is probably 80. And just see how it works and, and see how it goes. The thing is with that, it, it, I know Linda's neighborhood's a little unique than some other neighborhoods and challenges, different than challenges in other places, so, um, I, I don't know how you, how this, I'm kind of comfortable more with an 80, I think, in my opinion. Uh, just with some nuances might be challenging. Uh, living being documented, I love that idea, uh, the testing, I like that idea, um, going along with it. Uh, I do love the fact that the neighborhoods aren't involved in, in this design. I think that it, you know, there's some elements that maybe me personally, I don't, but I love the fact that the neighbors are involved in it and they decide and it's their street and they have ownership and all that stuff and that's exactly what I totally support. So I really get, dig that stuff. With the speed, uh, you know, personally, I like the tighter streets, um, speed humps, that's me personally. Uh, I use, I think between me and Robin's neighborhood on Alameda, what an opportunity, or not Alameda, maybe Dorsey, you know, landscape the median, tighten the, or make a pathway with the bike path, tighten the street, reducing the speed, possibly reducing, you know, speed humps and things like that. So, um, every neighborhood's, you know, that, but I think I probably would stay with those numbers. Does that make sense? You like that?
It, it does make sense. I mean, I, I think I like to land at a, at a number and, you know, what we're looking at, looked at 50, 51% and a 70%. If you, since we're talking about this as a living, breathing, entertain looking at those, those percentages, the percent, um, as a way to, to help us look at, we can use the downtown neighborhoods', um, uh, traffic safety plan that's advancing as a pilot to out those, those two thresholds.
One, yeah.
It's something that we can bring back to the council as we go through that test process with that neighborhood. Um, and, and see, I mean, I can assure you that the process, as you all know, um, and I've done capital projects here for decades, we, we try to get every voice and we make sure that we, we hear every voice and we try to achieve that consensus before, um, we advance something to construction.
Could.
And that would be the case with, with these projects as well.
Um, I, I, the 51% thing, I probably would not because I could see just conflict, you know, with that. That's why I think the.
That's why the 70 is there.
Yeah, exactly. So I, you know, um, the other thing is, I was just thinking about, is something weighted. Uh, does it make sense that a person who owns a property but doesn't live at the property is only weighted half? A person that is a res, is living at the property, rents the property, threshold of years gets them points and then over, I don't know, I'm just spitballing, 10 years, you get max points. Something to that effect. I, I don't know if that has, because here's the thing, I mean, no, no, it's just a.
One thing we always do, I mean, we work with, with, you know, Laura Kyfis and, and Shawna Warner, one thing we always do is we, we share, we typically share with the council, like, um, where the, you know, public response is and then we can, we can sort of sift through renters and we, we, you know, we like to give everyone an equal voice, of course, but we can share that inform, when we go forward with advancing, share that with the council. Hey, this is what we heard in the way of, you know, this entire area and then we can sift through renters, owners. We, we don't want to, I have concern about giving weight, um, at this point, especially in some of these neighborhoods where there's a lot of, you know, rental activity that is, you know, I was a renter for many years, it's what partly, it's when I fell in love with Tempe. We want to give those folks, of course, a voice as well.
You figure it out.
All right. Let me, uh, go to Councilmember Adams and then Councilmember QB.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the spirit of compromising, uh, how about we would go to 66% instead of 50%? So I'm, you know, I'm working there, you know, trying to, you know, align my colleagues here.
I love it, I love it.
You're at 80, okay, I'll go 70. Right, Joel?
74.
Councilmember QB, what do, what do, what do you think? You want to weigh in?
A lot of percentages here. I want to go back to the data and look at those university towns. They should be our model and I think we kind of made an error and we did get feedback from council, like, we're not really looking at Chandler and Gilbert as our peer cities, it's really the university cities. Go back and if it's 70%, I'd be okay, but I think 66% actually makes sense because then if there's three people involved, you're not letting one person decide it for everybody, you're having the two people decide it because there would be cases, so, I mean, you could argue that, but, you know, 70%. Can you go back to slide 19, though? I'm a little confused about, just to say the owner may sign, um, and, you know, knowing that, I'm thinking, and how so many, so many multifamily houses are going up, did I get, was it, I think it was 19?
It's.
The one before?
It says rental properties on it, correct?
Yeah, so we have multifamily owner or manager may sign. Um, what is, what does that mean, may sign? Because we have some landlords in the Maple Ash area, we have a particularly, I won't, you know, say the name, there's a landlord that has a lot of issues and problems with renters in, in downtown Tempe. And so I don't necessarily want to give that person that much power over our roadways and so I'm just confused about, what is it, what do you mean by may sign? Does that mean they sign?
It's the same as language in the single family, so it's, you know, we're, we're allowing renters to sign, there may be a ma, like if you have a big apartment, a manager that's representing the greater interest and they may sign and you, and you may also get the owner, you may get both.
Why not the renter though?
To weigh in on the project.
Why not the renter there?
We can certainly add that.
Since they're impacted.
I, I guess it was assumed, but yeah, we can certainly add that.
To me, it's not assumed. So, let's go back and I, you know, off, always we want, we'd want a hundred percent, that's ideal, but we're not going to get that. I'm sure that we can still move forward and I just want to say, like, this neighborhood is exhausted and they're exhausted from all the, from expending their own Marion Quarter Grant to get the study done. Um, and moving forward, we, it really needs to be identified. I'm really glad of this process, I'm glad we're making progress. Um, I think we have to keep in mind, though, that like, this isn't just about a step manual, it's about citizen trust, resident trust in our processes and so I'm glad we're moving forward, I'm glad we're looking at our actual peer city towns. I don't think the suburban towns that were mentioned by the, were there appropriate to look at? I mean, I, I attended a lot of those meetings and that was like loud and clear somehow. I'm really glad, I mean, it did end up in tonight's material, so I'm really glad of that, um, because I think that makes much more sense. Instead of throwing out percentages, I just like to look at what those peer cities have done, their success with it and what they say about it.
I agree, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds good. Thank you. Just a couple of quick things and I'm going to go back to Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Um, I do agree with Councilmember about, you know, looking at a lot of other sort of town and gown cities, I think they're, we might face, I was just in Ann Arbor, Michigan, a couple, that's another kind of community, you know, Ann Arbor, Madison, Wisconsin, communities that obviously have, and then but have huge thriving universities, I think would be really good indicators. But I'm going to, you know, talk about a percentage just for a second as well. I mean, what I'm hearing from the group is I've continued to hear people speak is it almost seems like if we got to be somewhere between 75%, that's probably right around the right number from what everyone said. I mean, I've heard everything from, you know, 66% to, I think Councilmember Navarro got down to about 74% at one point, I believe that was one of his final offers. So perhaps, so perhaps if there's somewhere between 75%, I, I, I understand what everyone's making, I mean, um, if, if we lower it to 40%, I mean, then all of a sudden, you know, I get it, you're going to create conflict. Um, but at some point, I totally get, you know, Ms. Knutson's point, I mean, the challenge at some point is 40%, we can't get 100% of, you know, support on anything, it's just not possible and we will, Adams talked about, you know, uh, sort of not enable residents to implement traffic mitigation measures in their neighborhoods that they frankly have been fighting for and desperate to need, uh, if we put the threshold that high. So from my perspective, it sounds like a 65, 75% number is right, probably need to be, but of course I will let you, uh, you know, work with your team and figure what it might be. Uh, but I do agree with Councilmember QB's, the other town and gown cities for, I think, cities that we should probably benchmarks, benchmark ourselves against, so. Um, Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Great, thank you. Agree with that, I, maybe the percentage I might disagree. Um, but I do want to say this too, I mean, we spent about two or three years really when we talked about student housing and, and finding those benchmark cities, I would really love it if you check in with Ryan LeVake because he was, actually had an ASU grad student, um, do a really big deep dive for us and try to find those, exactly those cities that were very comparable. And, um, I think they did, she did a really fabulous job and put together some notes for us that I think really brought forth those cities that were very comparable. So I certainly appreciate that. And I just want to reiterate, I think, something that Councilmember Navarro said and he talked about, you know, all of our neighborhoods are unique and they're going to probably, and you talk a little bit here too, there's a slide, Councilmember Garland pointed out, using professional, and I appreciate that, I think that's something that I would totally believe our staff can be able to do that, what that might look like. But I have to think though, too, is I don't want to just one neighborhood, you know, the Maple Ash neighborhood, Linda, I know you guys have been working diligently to get this done, but when we put this together, this impacts our entire, not over by Maple Ash, but I also live in a community where we have a, I bet you I look out at my house and there are more rentals than actually. And so, Councilmember QB said, and I brought it up before that too, was, is, I think, what it means when we talk about or sign and define what that is. I, I'm, I don't know what the answer to that is, but I do know what it's like to be some rental home. I don't really know if I'd want my renter speaking for me, especially if it's, maybe I'm, it's only been there for a short period of time or, you know, maybe I'm a, has been there, a resident at the same time too. So I think that could create some issues. I just want to make sure that you guys take a solid look at addressing what that looks like and coming up with a good solution and I'll certainly be open to that. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Anyone else from council have any comments or questions? Councilmember QB.
Well, just, do you have the consensus that you need?
Yeah, I, I think what I'm hearing is that, um, we're going to have, we, we will come back to you, I'm thinking I'm here, we need to come back and share some information with the council. But to move forward with other projects, have advancing as well as make this a document that we can take out to neighbors that want to pursue these things, that we sort of agree that this is a living, breathing document, um, we will, staff will work on some of these things like, um, uh, cleaning up and helping to give council some more, uh, language to owner issue as well as the comparisons with, um, really closely mirrored peer cities, some of the college towns, so get more information on those two things to you. But maybe move forward with, um, working with a 65 to 75% range at this point, um, as we go forward and seeing maybe how some of the next pilot project, um, for traffic calming go, with that in mind. Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Good?
Good.
And we will report back in the spirit of this living, breathing document. Wonderful.
What would be the timeframe on that, Eric?
Uh, I mean, we, I, I know for the next, uh, project that would be impacted by this, we're looking at testing in February, so I would say we'd want to, um, if not during that, that test period of February, March, be able to, back to you before that or during that time period, February, uh, January, February, March, to come back to you.
Okay, I just know a lot of people have been waiting a long time.
Understand, I mean, we can come back next, December if you'd like.
Prefer sooner than later.
Yes, at the pleasure of the council, for sure.
I'd prefer, I mean, provided you have enough time to gather the information you need to gather. I know, you know, Councilmember QB, I know wanted some, you know, additional work done. So I mean, if you can come back as early as December, I mean, that's great, but if, I think if it takes another couple of weeks, just, you know, I'm more concerned about getting it right than, than this.
Absolutely. I, I think we can then in December, that we certainly can.
Okay, that sounds good then, yeah, absolutely. Okay, Eric, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Your new position.
Yeah.
Temporary, but thank you.
It's just for today, today only.
Better recognize Eric's.
Alternate.
So, so, okay, so in, in keeping with what we talked about before, given sort of the lateness of the hour and some of the continued, uh, audio technical difficulties, anyone might make, I'm going to need a formal motion here, but if, uh, items, 2B, let me ask, uh, Madam Clerk, when, when will the next meeting be?
We could, one on November 18th, Wednesday, but it is during NLC and NLC is supposed to be virtual, so we might have to work.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we can do November 18th.
Questions? I think it's November 17th.
Okay. Oh, okay, all right, maybe, maybe, I, maybe I, I might have spoken too soon. But do you need to be certain on this, if we do a motion?
We do.
You do?
She said the 17th, though, not.
Yeah, November 17th, Wednesday, but it is during NLC. We don't really have any other Thursdays available due to holidays in November, but maybe we could look at a Monday.
When's the, do you work study beyond November 17th? Since I know Councilmember Adams talked about December.
The next work study session is completely booked.
Yeah, we're going to stack it up.
So I think we have seven items on that, fourth.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage, would the 17th be okay with you?
Did you do the 18th?
18th?
Well, the 18th, the eight, yeah, the 18th, I have no, so.
Okay, that was, well, that's, well, then that's the.
You could have just me, but I, we won't have a WebEx host.
Um, okay.
Can we do the 17th a little later, like start at 6:00 or?
Do you want to be there, Robin?
Do you know what you're?
I think it might be 10.
Tim.
The 17th. I can't hear you, you got to talk into the mic.
Okay, Tim. I will. On the 17th, that NLC speaking engagement, do you know, but, I know it's the 17th, right?
Yeah.
What time is it at?
Um, 12:00.
Two? Two, probably two to four.
Two to four.
Two to four, we're good. Okay. So, November, so we want to do maybe the 4:00, 4:00 PM for a work study?
Do you want to give a little buffer for Robin, 4:30?
The earlier the better for me.
4:30, okay, 4:30?
I have a forum that night, so the earlier the better.
Earlier the better?
Yeah, so 4:30 would be great.
4:30, okay.
Four, four, I mean, four would be better.
Four, four 10.
4:15.
Just kidding.
Good? Do that?
11.
All right, so, all right, so let's, uh, so if I could maybe, if someone else, I mean, I can't make the motion, but if someone else wants to make a motion to continue, uh, 2B, 2D and 4A1.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember QB and seconded by Councilmember Adams to move, uh, these, uh, items 2B, 2D and 4A1 to November 17th at 4:15 PM. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and take a roll call vote since the electronic voting system isn't working so well. Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, that item passes six to zero with, with Vice Mayor Keating absent.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that said, uh, since, once I apologize for the technical difficulty, I did say